Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday, May the 9th, 2022 Business Meeting. We will say welcome to our viewing audience that is joining us. I will call the meeting to order and ask that all that are here with us to please stand for the presentation of colors and the National Anthem.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of JM Robinson and Hickory Ridge High School's Air Force JROTC program. And their personnel includes Cadet Second Lieutenant Enri Prudente, Cadet Captain Caleb Carosi, Cadet Second Lieutenant Sarah Henson, Cadet Colonel Ethan Lyon. Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem were members of the Central Cabarrus High School Chamber Orchestra. And their personnel included Alionza Wilson, Taylor Smith, and Luke Tracy. Director of the Central Cabarrus Orchestra Program is Mr. Eric Landsberger. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we will move to adopting the agenda to items under number 3.01.
So moved.
Board members, we are going to ask that items under number 10.01 through 10.03 be pulled from the agenda and that they are going to, the staff is going to request that items under number 10.04 be renamed the Cabarrus County Schools Legislative Agenda 2022. May I have a motion with those corrections that the agenda be approved as presented?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. We will now move to our items under number 4.01, the Impact Through Education Awards. We will ask Mrs. Ronnie Boone to the podium, please.
Good evening. Tonight, we will present the final set of Impact Through Education Awards for the 2021-2022 Academic Year to students and staff at Bethel Elementary School and Northwest Cabarrus High School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable, and at this time, I'd like to invite our Equitable representatives, Mr. Alex Davidson and Mr. Seaver Rick Cordella to please join me at the front of the room. And I know that Mr. Davidson is out in the hallway because I saw him earlier. Mr. Allred, could you ask Mr. Davidson from Equitable to please come in? Thank you. I also want to say a word of thanks to our other sponsors of this award, Cabarrus Regional Chamber and Concord Trophy Center that also provides us with the plaques for these awards each month. So we do appreciate their support and continued sponsorship of this wonderful awards program for our students and staff. There he is. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Now on to tonight's awards. We'll begin with Bethel Elementary School, and I would like to invite the Bethel Administrative Team to come forward, please. Our first honoree from Bethel Elementary School is Joseph Frank. Would Joseph and his family please come forward? Joseph is a fifth grade student at Bethel Elementary School. Former and current teachers described Joseph as an extremely well-rounded student who is always kind to his peers. Joseph shows many leadership skills both inside and outside the classroom. He uses his manners when speaking with adults and always shows gratitude with a thank you and a big smile. In the classroom, he is engaged in every lesson and every subject. His love for learning leads him to do research on his own when learning a new subject. He always comes back and shares his new learnings with others. Joseph is an extreme, is truly an example of the Bethel core values of responsibility, engagement, kindness, leadership, and integrity. He is so very deserving of this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Joseph, Joseph, can you start that way? Oh, that's okay. We haven't done this in a while. And our next honoree from Bethel is Kaylee Rose, and unfortunately Kaylee could not join us this evening, but I did want to read the information that was submitted about Kaylee so that we can congratulate her in absentia. Kaylee is also a fifth grader at Bethel Elementary School. Kaylee's former and current teachers share that she takes her education very seriously and always strives to be better. She is kind and mannerly, always wanting and willing to help anyone and everyone, both adults and her peers. Kaylee is known for recognizing that all people have unique and special abilities and should always be treated with empathy. She sets a great example for her peers each and every day, striving to exemplify Bethel's core values, responsibility, engagement, kindness, integrity, and leadership. These are the reasons why Kaylee was selected to receive this Impact Through Education Award, and we will make sure that Ms. Barbie gets this award to her. So congratulations to Kaylee. Our next Bethel honoree is Mrs. Sally Brown, and Mrs. Brown was unable to join us this evening, but here's a little bit about her. Sally Brown is a third grade teacher this year at Bethel Elementary School. Her colleagues, her colleagues recognized her last year as the Bethel Teacher of the Year and jumped at the opportunity to once again recognize her for all of her contributions to the success of her students, the third grade, and to school-wide improvement. Staff members state that Sally is so dedicated to teaching and cares about every child, and she cares about the whole child. She knows that every little thing matters and every minute in the day is important. She delivers instruction effectively and is always looking at data to see where she can do, what she can do to alter and improve instruction to continue to meet students' ever-changing needs. Sally is also a team player, sharing ideas, taking new ideas, and listening to others' ideas. She is simply the best, all caps, and is quite deserving of this recognition for the tremendous impact she makes through education at Bethel Elementary School, and we say congratulations to Mrs. Brown. And our final honoree from Bethel this evening is Crystal Williams. Would Mrs. Williams and her family please come forward? Crystal Williams is a teacher assistant at Bethel Elementary School. Her Bethel family members describe her as amazing. Mrs. Williams cares about every kid, works hard to plan and be ready for groups, delivers amazing instruction, and knows her stuff. She's always willing to go above and beyond anything that is asked of her. Mrs. Williams loves all students and watching them grow. During any spare time that she has throughout the day, she is researching to make learning more fun and engaging, studying and preparing for her lessons, pulling students into work one-on-one, and making sure teachers have what they need and are taken care of. She never complains and loves her job. She is simply the best. For these and so many more reasons, Bethel Elementary School is proud to present Mrs. Crystal Williams with this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Now for our honorees from Northwest Cabarrus High School. I'd like to welcome any members of the Northwest Cabarrus High School Administrative Team to the front of the room, please. Our first honoree from Northwest Cabarrus High School this evening is Gabriella Mullis. Would Gabriella and her family please come forward? Gabby Mullis illuminates any room with her gentle nature and positivity. Her genuine care and concern for humanity is remarkable. Gabby has an incredible gift of working with others and a dynamic way to engage others to make them feel motivated and encouraged. She has demonstrated these skills through her volunteer experience, including her experience with the Tommy Project. With this project, she took her own personal experiences and created a psychoeducational program to support and educate others who may also be experiencing a similar circumstance, specifically within our Cabarrus community. For Gabby, although this project was a vulnerable experience, she wants to be an inspiration to others who share the similar experience of having to overcome adversity and challenges to pursue their dreams. Gabby has shared how she worked through her grief and pain in ways that are therapeutic for her but also supportive for others. She has seen her mother provide her family, provide for her family as a single parent. Inspired by her mother's work ethic, Gabby has overcome adversity and proven herself to be a dedicated and hard-working student. Gabby's successes are also her mother's successes, as her mother has been with her every step of the way. Seeing how her mother loves, encourages, and teaches her to her drives Gabby to want to continue to be successful and pursue her dreams to further her education. Gabriella is quite deserving of this Impact Through Education Award, and we congratulate her. Congratulations. Our next honoree from Northwest Cabarrus High School is Lacey Wiley. Would Lacey and her family please come forward? Lacey Wiley's leadership, kindness, and curiosity shine through in every interaction. Her authenticity shows her as a role model for all students at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Lacey demonstrates leadership through her active participation in the JROTC program as a Northwest Cabarrus High School cadet. Cadet Wiley has participated in JROTC throughout her entire high school career and has earned the respect of her fellow cadets and instructors. She serves as group commander and is frequently seen in the Northwest community, leading junior cadets and encouraging them to exemplify the traits of JROTC, community, leadership, and citizenship. She shows her kindness not only through her leadership roles in JROTC but also through her continued participation as a varsity cheerleader at Northwest Cabarrus. She is an example to her younger teammates, always willing to lend a helping hand or listening ear. Lacey won the Coaches Award for Varsity Cheer because of her character and kindness. Lacey demonstrates her curiosity through her dedication to furthering her education. She will attend Lee's McCray College in the fall and plans to major in criminal justice with a potential focus in forensic psychology. She will no doubt continue her leadership roles at Lee's McCray, as a Lee's McCray student, as she recently received a $48,000 Merit Scholarship and a $20,000 Academic Athletic Scholarship for College Cheer. Lacey exemplifies the best traits of a Northwest Trojan, and the school is proud to present her with this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Mr. Andrew Highsmith. Would Mr. Highsmith please come forward with his family? Mr. Andy Highsmith began his educational career more than 20 years ago in the mountains of western North Carolina after graduating from Appalachian State University. Luckily, Andy did not remain in the mountains, although he may say otherwise. He transitioned to Cabarrus County Schools in 2007 as a social studies teacher and tennis coach at Northwest Cabarrus High School. In the years since, Andy earned his master's degree in instructional technology and worked at Cabarrus Early College, Royal Oaks Elementary, and JM Robinson High Schools as an instructional technology facilitator and tennis coach before returning to Northwest Cabarrus High School in 2020, which staff members hope will be his last stop in his professional journey. In the short time since he returned to Northwest Cabarrus after a decade away, Andy has once again become beloved for his work ethic, willingness to help students and staff in any manner, and desire to help teachers facilitate student achievement across the curriculum. According to Mrs. Margaret Gladen, who teaches English at Northwest Cabarrus High School, Northwest Cabarrus hit the jackpot with Andy Highsmith as its technology facilitator. Andy is very knowledgeable with various types of technology, and he is always willing to share that knowledge by helping teachers learn new digital resources. If teachers need technical support, they can put in a technology ticket and text him, and he gets back to them immediately. If he can't get down to resolve the issue, he sends someone who can. Not only does Andy help with technology, but he also has assisted students in small groups with remediation skills. He has formed good relationships with students, and they know he will help them if needed. He has attended departmental PLC meetings and offered to help analyze benchmark data or create resources to alleviate teachers' workloads. Whatever teachers need, Andy is there to offer support. Mrs. Tina Playtek, the Trojan Media Center Coordinator, concurs and adds, "Mr. Highsmith is the man behind the curtain. He is pragmatic and humble and works tirelessly to make sure that the school technology is updated and functions as it should in a way that often gets overlooked and forgotten. Everything always works, and if it doesn't, he makes it his personal goal and mission to see that it does." Mr. Highsmith is a positive leader for students and staff. He supports teachers through instruction with a variety of tech tools but also updates the school with the latest technology. His dry wit and sense of humor, in addition to his creativity, add to his professionalism. Mr. Highsmith builds relationships with staff and students and encourages collaboration and teamwork. He is a thoughtful leader who continuously works to improve instruction and the overall climate of the school. Mr. Highsmith is the best. Andy's spare time is filled with the joy in being the husband and pickleball partner to his wife of 14 years, Kate, and the father of his two incredible boys, Noah and Anderson. Andy has a lifelong passion for his faith, travel with his family, tennis, and the outdoors. Northwest Cabarrus High School thanks Mr. Highsmith for coming home, and Trojan Nation is lucky to have him. Congratulations. And our final honoree this evening from Northwest Cabarrus High School is Mrs. Harriet Wilson. Would Mrs. Wilson and her family please come forward? Mrs. Wilson, or Ms. Harriet, as she is affectionately referred to by the Northwest Cabarrus High School staff and students, got her start in the school nutrition program more than 10 years ago as an assistant at Wolf Meadow Elementary School. She began her career in the dishroom, where she quickly realized she wished to pursue a leadership position. Within a year, she was in the manager training program, where she worked in numerous schools, gaining invaluable experience, working with the different people in different settings. Upon completion of her training, Ms. Harriet was named the cafeteria manager at Beverly Hills Elementary School. She spent more than four years managing and growing the program at Beverly Hills before moving to Northwest Cabarrus in 2018, where she loves working with her amazing and productive cafeteria team. According to the staff at Northwest Cabarrus High School, Ms. Harriet epitomizes the word warrior. She is brave, strong, and leads by example to expect excellence of herself, her program, and her colleagues. Ms. Harriet gets in the trenches with her staff, and she is incredibly knowledgeable about the school nutrition program. She is tough but fair and works to help adults and students alike reach their potential. Students and staff see someone daily who clearly loves their job, and her positivity and passion for helping the students at Northwest is immeasurable and inspiring. When Mrs. Wilson is not cooking up meals for the students at Northwest Cabarrus High School, she spends her time crocheting, reading, going to the beach, and making people laugh with her very corny jokes. Ms. Harriet, Trojan Nation is lucky to have you, and they want you to know how grateful they are for your smiles, kind words, and all that you do each and every day. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award.
Okay, and now we will move to 4.02 for the Hendrick Autumnall Concord Mills Teacher of the Year by Dr. Marion Bish.
Good evening. Board members and Dr. Kopicki, it is my pleasure to be able to introduce you to our Teacher of the Year. I'd like to invite Angie McLean, her family, Richard Wells and Michael Baden from Beverly Hills Elementary, and Chris Imes from Honda of Concord up to the front for this recognition, please. Angie McLean is a kindergarten teacher at Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School. She was named the Hendrick Autumnall Concord Mills Teacher of the Year during an event on April 13th. The announcement was made by Superintendent Dr. John Kopicki during a ceremony held at the Davis Theater honoring Teacher of the Year representatives from every school in the district. Ms. McLean began her teaching career in Cabarrus County Schools in 2007 as a teacher assistant at Wyancoff STEM Elementary. In 2019, she began working as a second grade teacher at Beverly Hills STEM Elementary. She went on to become the AIG teacher at Beverly Hills STEM Elementary and Patriot STEM Elementary, teaching first through fifth grade. She rejoined the Beverly Hills STEM Elementary family full-time this year, teaching kindergarten. Angie earned her Associate's in Arts degree from Rowan Cabarrus Community College in 2010 and her Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education with a minor in Social Studies from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte in 2013. A strong teacher leader, Angie has served in a variety of leadership roles. These include clinical educator for multiple student teachers, a Cabarrus County Schools mentor to multiple beginning teachers, a 2019 Teacher Leadership Cohort Participant, UNCC Teacher Education Institute Participant, and multiple nominations for Teacher of the Year. She was the 2011 Cabarrus County School Impact Through Education recipient from Wyancoff STEM Elementary. According to Beverly Hills STEM Elementary Principal Dr. Ritchie Wells, "Mrs. McLean is the perfect representative for our district. She understands the responsibility that comes with the role. She understands the importance of diversity as an asset to any organization. In her classroom, every voice is heard and valued. She will bring a conviction to do what's right for kids to any table, anywhere, anytime. This is the person I want representing our district." Presenting Ms. McLean with her plaque tonight is our sponsor, Mr. Chris Imes, the manager at Honda of Concord. And Mr. Imes, thank you for being here and thank you for supporting our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Angie McLean, Hendrick Autumnall Concord Mills Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Angie McLean, Hendrick Autumnall Concord Mills Teacher of the Year.[590.24][590.24](applause)
Okay, we will keep Dr. Bish for 4.03, the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
So again, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Kopicki, and our viewing audience, both here and watching livestream, it is my pleasure to introduce you to our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May. We always want to begin expressing our thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their generosity and their continued sponsorship of this recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May is Jennifer McCarthy, a math teacher at JM Robinson High School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. McCarthy, her family, and any members of the school's administrative team to come forward. So Mrs. McCarthy has received her monetary award from Mr. Vaughn and his prize patrol during a surprise visit to her classroom. Tonight, we want to share the nomination that was submitted by parents and what they wrote about Mrs. McCarthy. They said, "There are no words to describe the impact that Mrs. Jennifer McCarthy has on the students of Cabarrus County Schools. While Mrs. McCarthy teaches at JM Robinson High School, her educational reach extends to students throughout the county in various forms, and it is that extension of her role that has made the most impact on our son and our family. Mrs. McCarthy is not our son's teacher, as our son attends West Cabarrus High School. However, Jenny has become a guiding light in our lives, and her positive approach to teaching has helped our son find the joy in learning again. The care and concern she has for the success of all children shines through in all she does. Jenny gives of herself so that others can reach their goals and achieve success. She works tirelessly for her students at JM Robinson, teaching three preps and offering after-school support. In addition, she is supporting students who are not in her classes through tutoring sessions, as she does all she can to ensure that students are reaching their potential. Mrs. McCarthy is a dedicated educator who truly puts students first. She understands the teenage learner," that's a brilliant thing,"[821.24][821.24](laughter) "and works to provide real-world examples in her teaching to build their engagement and interest. We consider ourselves fortunate that our son gets to be guided by her during this time in his life. She deserves to be recognized for her efforts, and we're proud to say that her impact will positively support our son in his educational journey. We hope that you recognize her for the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month." So Mrs. McCarthy, thank you for the impact you're making to teach and engage the students in your classroom and those you tutor, even if they go to West Cabarrus, right? Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.[867.44][867.44](applause)
Okay, now we will move to 4.04. We will have the Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award, and we'll have Mr. John Legrand to the podium.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kopicki. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Ken Kirby and family forward to be recognized. This evening, I am very proud to recognize this month's Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award. This award is presented monthly to an employee within our Auxiliary Services Department, which includes our Kids Plus, Facilities Maintenance, Construction, Student Nutrition, and Transportation Departments. This award is intended to recognize the outstanding behind-the-scenes work of our employees in Auxiliary Services that often goes unnoticed. As we all know, there is great work being done daily by these employees that should be recognized publicly. In addition to the public recognition, excuse me, and our board members, we are very grateful for our partners at Great Wolf Lodge that have generously provided complimentary water passes for four to each month's recipient of our Everyday Hero Award. With us tonight is this month's recipient of the Everyday Hero Award, Mr. Ken Kirby. Mr. Kirby works in our Facilities Maintenance Department and was nominated by Cabarrus Virtual Academy Principal, Mr. Ken Simeon. Mr. Simeon had this to say about Mr. Kirby. "Mr. Kirby is always attentive and efficient in what he does. His work is of high quality, as he continuously checks to make sure that he is doing things to the requested specifications. Ken wants to make sure that at the end of the day, everything is done correctly and safely for school, staff, and students. When something needs to be done in the Carpentry Department, I know it will be done quickly and will be done to the highest of quality when Ken is involved. He is supportive of the school system and their mission for helping students succeed by giving them great places to learn. Last summer, Ken worked hard on getting our multiplex mobile unit together so that students could occupy it as the school year started. He made sure that everything done in the unit was something that he and Cabarrus County Schools could be proud of. Since moving into the unit, Ken has continued to help us work through small issues while also providing advice on different things that happen in multiplex units, like the shifting of seams. I know that when I ask a question, Ken will give me an honest answer that I can trust. His willingness to give advice and follow through on all projects is why he is a true asset to Cabarrus County Schools. I am proud to work with him and proud to show off the outstanding work that he has done at our Cabarrus Virtual Academy. Thank you, Ken, from Mr. Simeon." I would also like to thank Mr. Simeon for submitting this nomination, and I would personally like to say, "Well done, Mr. Kirby, and congratulations on truly being an everyday hero."[1132.24][1132.24](applause)
Now, we will move to 4.05, the Scholarships and Military Appointments. Mr. John Veselis to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm honored to be here tonight with you. This is probably my favorite night of the year when it comes to board meetings. It's such a great, a great opportunity for us all to celebrate the accomplishments of these wonderful young people. In a year like we've had, or probably the last couple of years, there's a bent towards pessimism, and man, honestly, if you have any pessimism at all, please talk to these people. This is our future. These are some amazing young people. I spend a little bit of time just talking with them, and they're very smart, they're very determined, they're resilient and gritty, capable people, and also, I didn't spend a lot of time with them, but you get a sense right away, they're just cool people to hang around with, so I'm just really proud of them. So who are these people, you might be asking? These are young people from our high schools, seniors who have full-ride scholarships. And Cabarrus County Schools, we view full-ride scholarships as the greatest honor an institution of higher learning can bestow upon a young person. So I'm going to call them up and introduce them one by one. I'm going to ask that you guys pause for a minute, so Mr. Martin can take a picture of you. If there's an adult closer to my age than yours that came into the room, they might want to do the same thing, just to honor and celebrate you guys. We're all so very proud of you, and I wish we had a long time to talk, teach one of you, and let you all give a speech about how great your future is, but we don't have that opportunity. But I am going to introduce you all one by one, okay? First, I want to introduce Chris Thaggard. Chris will be going to Northwestern University, and he has a full athletic scholarship for playing soccer. Chris, can you step forward?[1333.64][1333.64](applause) Okay, sounds good, sounds good. Okay, next, I'm going to call up Anaya Woodruff. Anaya Woodruff will be going to Howard University, and she has a full athletic scholarship for Allow me to backpedal for just a minute. Chris attends our, attends our Cabarrus Virtual Academy, and Anaya attends Hickory Ridge High School. Next, we have Abigail Thomas. Abigail will be attending Northeastern University, and she has an academic and athletic scholarship. She has the Dean Scholarship, and she also has an athletic scholarship for track. And Abigail attends Hickory Ridge High School.[1398.32][1398.32](applause) All right, next, we have Cade Thomas Goldman. Cade also attends Hickory Ridge High School. He will be going to UNC Charlotte on a full scholarship, where he will be playing left tackle, or right tackle, somewhere in the offensive line,[1421.76][1421.76](laughter) for the 49er football team. So congratulations to you.[1426.24][1426.24](applause) Our next outstanding scholar is Brandon Jones. Brandon will be attending Farrum College, where he received the Beckham Presidential Scholarship Award. Brandon goes to Hickory Ridge High School. Just a little bit about the Beckham Presidential Scholarship. It was a rigorous interview process that involved an essay, and Brandon wrote a piece on the unintended consequences and positive consequences of an innovation like the automobile. So congratulations to you.[1466.64][1466.64](applause) Our next outstanding scholar is Shre Chandi, Shre Chande, who will be attending Vanderbilt University. Shre is a Hickory Ridge High School senior, and he will be going to Vanderbilt on an academic merit scholarship. Congratulations to you.[1494.84][1494.84](applause) I see what you guys are doing now. Okay, all right. So I'm going to say a little bit, just a little bit, over the years, you've probably, those of you who have seen a few of these, you've heard us mention the Park Scholarship. The Park Scholarship is a full-ride scholarship awarded to young people who are committed to service, leadership, citizenship, community, and of course, academics. So first, allow me to introduce you to Carla Vasquez. Carla is a JM Robinson High School senior. She has a Park Scholarship and will be attending NC State University. Congratulations to her.[1539.44][1539.44](applause) Next, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Shiva Godarati, pardon me, Shiva Godarati from Cox Mill High School, also a Park Scholar, who will be attending North Carolina State University. Congratulations to you.[1560.58][1560.58](applause) Next is Akshar Patel from Northwest Cabarrus High School, also a Park Scholar from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Congratulations to you.[1581.00][1581.00](applause) We had a few people on our list that were not able to be present tonight. I'm going to call their names out, just to honor them. Ethan David Lyon has had an appointment to the United States Air Force Academy. He was here for JROTC earlier. You've seen him before. He's a great young man, he just wasn't able to be here tonight. Also, Kelsey Payne, going to Boston University as a university scholar, and Shauna C. Behringer from Northwest was awarded a track and field scholarship as well. Folks, again, just, our future is bright. Look in front of you, there's much cause for optimism and celebration. I'm grateful to all of you all for spending the night with us. Thank you.[1629.12][1629.12](applause)
Okay, board members, we will move to 4.06 for the Governor's School, and we will have Mrs. Kelly Donahue to the podium. Good evening. Ms. Donahue, if you'll key the mic, key the mic. Turn the red button on.
Did that do it? Oh, awesome, thank you. All right. The North Carolina Governor's School is the nation's oldest statewide summer residential program for high school students. The program, which is open to rising seniors and some rising juniors in selected performing in visual arts areas, is a multi-week summer residential program integrating academic disciplines, the arts, and unique courses on each of two campuses. Students are selected to attend through a competitive process after being nominated by their public school unit. This year's students will attend Governor's School from June 16th through July 19th at either the East Campus at Meredith College in Raleigh, or the West Campus at Winston-Salem State University in Winston-Salem. I am pleased to announce that 32 Cabarrus County School students have been selected this year. This includes 16 students from the academic areas of social science, natural science, mathematics and English, and 16 students from the arts areas of choral music, visual art, dance, instrumental music, and theater. The 2022 Cabarrus County Schools' Governor's School students are Hayden Abercrombie from West Cabarrus High School, Simran Aurora from Hickory Ridge High School- Anna Claire Watson, Concord High School, Carter Witt, Hickory Ridge High School, and Rama Yakala, Cox Mill High School. Congratulations.
On the end, you're going to follow behind and shake hands, and you guys will get in a line and go right behind. Did that make sense?
Yes. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Tyson to the podium. Good evening.
All right, I think that's everybody. Good evening, board members. Dr. Kapiki, we are here tonight to celebrate and recognize the J.M. Robinson Men's Basketball Team on winning the 2A State Championship this year. J.M. defeated Farmville Central High School 70 to 68 at the Dean E. Smith Center in Chapel Hill on Saturday, March 12th. Like I said, 70 to 68. These gentlemen had a 28-3 record on the season, undefeated in the conference, just an exceptional year. This is the second state championship for J.M. Robinson in the history of their school. And Coach Bats, congratulate him too. He also coached that team back in 2016. I don't know if any of these, I won't put you on the spot, any guys ask you, who would win if 216 played? I'm sure it's the 22 team, right? Right, right. These guys, that was a great game, Dr. Kapiki and Tim Ferrin, myself got to go up there and watch that. Guys did have us a little nervous there the last minute or two, but especially Dr. Kapiki, he got a little, he's a cool customer most of the time, but he got, he got a little animated and something about officiating or something, but, so I had to move a couple of seats down from him, but we reeled him in. And these guys, you guys kept your poise and pulled it out at the end, and that was just a great accomplishment, and we're proud of you for that. So I'd like to recognize each one of these gentlemen, and you can kind of step forward when I call your name. Samarian Hughes, he couldn't make it, okay? Zaki Wheeler, Jalen Jackson, okay? Brian Rowe, Jamari Brooks, Jack Kilsey. Jack was also recognized as a 2A Sportsmanship Award winner for the state championship. Pierce Carter, Camden Camp, London Roseman, Terrell Parker, Jermaine Gray. Okay, and Jermaine's not here, but Jermaine was the most outstanding player with 22 points and nine rebounds for the game. Big game for him. Andrew Jordan, okay, and Davin Hobbs. And Davin was recognized as the Charlie Adams Most Valuable Player for the state championships with a big 16 points and 17 rebounds that game. So outstanding effort. And they were coached by Head Coach LeVar Bats Sr. and Andrew Jackson. Congratulations, you guys. These guys got a lot of returning players too. Look forward to next year. You guys will turn around and walk down the line and shake the board members' hands. Yeah, come on.
Okay, we will move to 4.08, the Career and Technical Education Awards and Honors, and we'll have Mr. Rusty Parker and Mrs. Melanie Ritter to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. As they come in, this evening I get to recognize all of the CTSO winners, and there were about 56 first-place winners. They're not all here tonight, but there's a list of them, so we'll go through each one. And I'm thrilled also to have several of the advisors here with us this evening, so I'll recognize those as we get on the list. We filled the room up. For Central Cabarrus High School, we had one first-place winner. Her name is Cecilia Maxwell, and her, her advisor is Melanie Parker. She could not be here this evening, but she was the one winner from Central Cabarrus. From Cox Mill High School for the DECA program, we have two people here this evening, but I'll recognize the whole list, but Wesley Ayers, Carlisle Ballantyne, Arianna Sommer, Ria Couture, Jarrett Medina, Connor Plastid, Wesley Taylor, Zaria Neville, Kristi, Pandela Poppy, Rama Yakala, and then Patricia McTeague is the advisor. She's their marketing teacher at Cox Mill, so Patricia is their advisor. The HOSA list, we had several winners in HOSA from Central Cabarrus, and their advisor is Jennifer Ripper. And that is Tisha Abdul, Sue McBarrel, Jerry Chin, Pooja Gadareddy, and Shiva Gadareddy, Hashir Hashmi, Shravali Kantamani, Kripas Kasabwala, does, I will mess this name up, Darshini Mathakumar, sorry about that, Shre Shandy, and Regaline Ugargan, and then Jennifer Ripper again was the advisor. For Hickory Ridge, we have several winners, and again, from FFA Wyatt Han, and then Abby Kariker is the advisor. She's our agriculture teacher at Hickory Ridge. And then also for the DECA program, we had Shre Shandy, I think he's already been recognized once this evening, and Skeethram Marmadron, I practiced that, I still messed it up, Josiah Young, and then Hannah Lightly and Ella Machado are the advisors. They're our marketing teachers at Hickory Ridge. HOSA at Hickory Ridge is Vasista Chitiluru, Nihal Kalith, Anna Peters, Vaishvik Polniti, Keeshav Saxena, Maggie Waters, and then Robin Dakoto and Kimberly Osterhaus are the advisors for HOSA. And then Skills USA, we have, they also had a Skills USA team, and actually, I think this is the first year Hickory Ridge had a Skills USA team. And so it was Asha Tbla, Felicia Charles, Miles DeKiva, Amira Hassan, Abir Kamani, Samantha Kelly, William Marloff, Kendall Raybeck, and then Stephen Walker is the advisor. We have some people here from Mount Pleasant, I saw some of their advisors come in. FFA, we had some first-place winners from Mount Pleasant, Vincent Farrell, Elena Finley, Eli Lambert, David Thompson, and Katie Cawthon and Jay Tolson are the FFA advisors. Thank you for being here. And then Skills USA, the advisors are Cody Alward and Anthony Heron, and their winners are Cody Landau and then Brayden Paris. So those are the winners from Mount Pleasant. And then for Northwest Cabarrus, we had a huge team of go-to Skills USA, and they are Sri Agarwal, Blake Andrews, Ella Baldarris, Cameron Beaver, Chloe Cable, Lindy Colwell, Miriam Johnson, Samantha Mack, Thomas Nguyen, Akshar Patel, and then Kyle Wood. And again, Stephen Thacker is their advisor. We had a lot of winners this year, can you tell? Let's give them a big hand.
Okay, everybody take two steps forward, and on the end, you're going to follow behind and shake hands, and everybody just kind of get in a little line and go right. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations, sir. Okay, we will move to 4.09, the Fine Arts Awards and Honors by Mr. Bart Tullberg.
Let's come on back towards the center. Our first, our first group to recognize tonight is the Hickory Ridge High School Band Program. The Hickory Ridge High School Concert Band, Symphonic Band, and Wind Ensembles all received superior ratings at the 2022 Music Performance Assessment in March. Concert Band in Grade III Literature, and Symphonic Band in Grade IV Literature, and the Wind Ensemble in Grade VI Literature. Music Performance Assessment is the only state sanctioned event that provides a summative standards-based assessment designed to measure student performance as related to the goals, objectives, and grade-level competencies specified in the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. Maximilian Pesch was selected for the National Association of Music Education National Concert Band this past January. Max is in the 11th grade and plays the baritone saxophone. Wesley Connor was selected for the National Association of Music Education All-Nation Symphony Orchestra in this past January. Wesley's in the 10th grade and plays the trombone. Maximilian Pesch, Wesley Connor, and Colin Nguyen were selected for the 2022 North Carolina All-State Bands. Max plays the baritone saxophone, Wesley the trombone, and Colin the trumpet. The All-State Band Clinic was held this past weekend at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. The Hickory Ridge Winter Guard was named 2022 Scholastic Regional A-Class Champion of the Carolina Winter Ensemble Association this past March. Also, it is important to note that for the third year in a row, Hickory Ridge High School was selected as a Best Community for Music Education Award recipient by the National Association of Music Merchants. This award recognizes schools and districts across the nation for their commitment and support of music education. The director of the Hickory Ridge Band Program is Mr. Chris White. Congratulations to you all. Agneah Roy received three different national-level awards in music performance this year. He was awarded second place in classical singing and first place in musical theater performance at the National Association of Teachers of Singing Mid-Atlantic Regional Competition held in March. Agneah also placed second in the 12-U Musical Theater Division of the Hal Leonard National Children's Vocal Competition. The annual Hal Leonard Competition was founded in 2011 to encourage young singers from around the U.S. and children throughout college, from children throughout, through college undergraduates. Thousands of singers participate each year with the top-placing videos from 35 states and provinces and over 40 colleges and universities around the world. The Hal Leonard Vocal Competition was the first of music competitions to be held entirely on YouTube. Agneah's music teacher is Jen Archer, and his vocal coach is Brandy Ikerd. Congratulations. Shake hands with the board. The Harris Road Middle School 6th Grade Band and also the 8th Grade Band both received superior ratings at the 2022 North Carolina Music Performance Assessment in March. Their 6th Grade Ensemble in Grade I Literature and the 8th Grade in Grade II Literature. NPA is the only state sanctioned event that provides summative standards-based assessment designed to measure student performance based on the objectives of the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. Jackson Erp and Ellen Wei were selected for the 2022 All-State Middle School Band. Jackson is a 7th Grade trombone player, and Ellen is an 8th Grade percussionist. The All-State Band Clinic was held this past weekend on the campus of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. The band directors at Harris Road Middle School are Ms. Leah Pfeifer and Ms. Amelia Cogur. Congratulations to you all. There you go. There you go. The Harris Road Middle School 6th Grade Band and also the 8th Grade Band both received superior ratings at the 2022 North Carolina Music Performance Assessment in March. Their 6th Grade Ensemble in Grade I Literature and the 8th Grade in Grade II Literature. NPA is the only state sanctioned event that provides summative standards-based assessment designed to measure student performance based on the objectives of the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. Jackson Erp and Ellen Wei were selected for the 2022 All-State Middle School Band. Jackson is a 7th Grade trombone player, and Ellen is an 8th Grade percussionist. The All-State Band Clinic was held this past weekend on the campus of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. The band directors at Harris Road Middle School are Ms. Leah Pfeifer and Ms. Amelia Cogur. Congratulations to you all. There you go. There you go. The Hickory Ridge Middle School 7th Grade Band and 8th Grade Bands both received superior ratings at the 2022 North Carolina Music Performance Assessment in March. Their 7th Grade Band in Grade II Literature and the 8th Grade in Grade III. NPA is the only state sanctioned event that provides a summative standards-based assessment based on the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. Lauren Sawyer, trom, a trombone player, Caitlin Lewis, euphonium, Corinne Stoffer, French horn, Madison Lu percussion, Jamison Young, trumpet, Gabriel Luzza, trumpet, and William Zhou, French horn, were selected for the 2022 All-State Middle School Band. The All-State Clinic was held this past weekend on the campus of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. The band directors at Hickory Ridge Middle School are Mr. David Rivero and Mr. Derek Smith. It is also important to note that Mr. David Rivero was awarded the North Carolina Band Masters Association Young Director of Excellence Award by the South Central District in January. So it is fair to say that Mr. Rivero exhibits excellence in all facets of the instrumental education program. Congratulations to you all. Our next group to be recognized is Theater Department from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Mr. Myers is standing in for us this evening. Thank you. Northwest Cathedral received both individual and ensemble awards at the North Carolina Theater Competition this past year. Ensemble Awards included the Festival Spirit Award, as well as individual awards in excellence in acting by student Emma Brown. Additionally, Noah Haybreaker and Emma Brown were chosen as Best Actor and Best Actress nominees for the 2022 Bloomy Awards for their portrayals of William Barfy and Ronald Lisa Peretti in Northwest Cabarrus' production of the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. This recognition makes them eligible to compete for the overall Best Actor and Best Actress Bloomy Awards. The Bloomy Awards are created to recognize and encourage, as well as reward talent and achievement in musical theater by high school students in the greater Charlotte area. The theater director at Northwest Cabarrus High School is Ms. Andy Rassler, and again, thank you to Mr. Myers. Congratulations. The next group is the JM Robinson High School Beginning Band. The JM Robinson Beginning Band received a Superior Rating in Grade III Literature at the 2022 Music Performance Assessment in March. It is important to note that these students only began to play their instruments this year and did not have the benefit of a middle school music education program. MPA is the only state-sanctioned event that provides summative standards-based assessment based on the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. The band director at JM Robinson High School is Mr. Drew Carter. Congratulations. Our next group is the Central Cabarrus High School Chorus. The Central Cabarrus Women's Chorale received a Superior Rating in Proficient Level Repertoire at the North Carolina Music Performance Assessment in March. MPA is the only state-sanctioned event that provides a summative standards-based assessment based on the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. Cadence Zuzinski was selected for the 2021 North Carolina Honors Chorus in November. The purpose of the NC Honors Chorus is to honor outstanding singers from North Carolina Choral Music Programs in our state by giving the opportunity to perform at the highest level of achievement in our state. Katie Bush, Emily Dameron, Jenna Gulemet, and Cadence Zuzinski were also selected for the 2022 Mars Hill Choral Festival in February. Established on the campus of Mars Hill University in 1949, the Mars Hill Festival is recognized as the premier high school choral festival in the southeast. Haley Barnes, Jenna Gulemet, and Gina Taylor were selected for the 2022 All-Carolina Select Choir in March. Established in 2015, the All-Carolina Select has rapidly grown into one of the most competitive auditioned choral ensembles in North Carolina. The Choral Director at Central Cabarrus High School is Mr. Ethan Price. Congratulations to you all. Our next group for recognition tonight is the Central Cabarrus High School Band. The Central Cabarrus Band received a Superior Rating in Grade III Literature at the 2022 MPA Assessment in March. Music Performance Assessment is the state-sanctioned event that provides a standards-based assessment designed to measure student performance based on the North Carolina Course of Study. The Band Director at Central Cabarrus High School is Mr. Joshua Adams. Congratulations. The next group to be recognized tonight is the Cox Mill Dance Ensemble. Cox Mill Dance Ensemble, consisting of Calle Alexander, Logan Coleman, Celia Moore, Emma Brady, and Madison Brewer, was awarded first place in Small Ensemble Jazz at the 2022 North Carolina Association for Scholastic Activities Dance Competition in February. NCASA believes that interscholastic competition motivates students to reach their full potential and teaches sportsmanship and teamwork. The Dance Director at Cox Mill High School is Ms. Lindsay Blackburn. Congratulations. Our next group to be recognized are members of the Cox Mill High School Chorus. Jamison Black and Grayson Hall were selected for the 2022 Mars Hill Choral Festival in February. Established on the campus of Mars Hill University in 1949, the festival is recognized as the premier high school choral festival in the entire southeast. Cam Alsberry was also selected for the 2022 All-Carolina Select Chorus in March. Established in 2015, All-Carolina Select has become one of the most competitive auditioned choral ensembles in the state of North Carolina. The Choral Director at Cox Mill High School is Mrs. Jennifer Cook. Congratulations to each of you. Next, we have members of the Cox Mill High School Band Program. The Cox Mill High School Symphonic Band and Wind Ensemble both received Superior Ratings at the 2022 Music Performance Assessment in March. The Symphonic Band in Grade III and the Wind Ensemble in Grade V Literature. MPA is the only state-sanctioned event that provides a summative standard-based assessment based on the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. Additionally, Mason Tortorelli and Edward Jung were selected for the 2022 North Carolina All-State Bands. Mason plays the flute and Edward the French horn. The All-State Band Clinic was held this past weekend at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. The Band Director at Cox Mill High School is Mr. Adam Singer. Congratulations to you. All right. This is the West Cabarrus High School Chorus. Gustavo Mesa was selected for the 2021 North Carolina Honors Chorus in November. The purpose of Honors Chorus is to help outstanding honors singers from around the state of North Carolina in their music programs by giving them the opportunity to perform at the highest level of achievement, to provide an outstanding educational experience for both the students and the teachers of the choral community. Carolyn Crawford, Angelina Nieto, and Gustavo Mesa were also selected for the 2022 Mars Hill Choral Festival in February. Established in 1949, the Mars Hill Choral Festival is recognized as the premier high school choral festival in the southeast. Ethan Casteline, Christian Farrar, Michaela Smith, and Lacey Wiley were selected for the 2022 All-Carolina Select Choir in March. Established in 2015, the All-Carolina Select has rapidly grown into one of the most competitive auditioned ensembles in North Carolina. The Choral Director at West Cabarrus High School is Mrs. Laura Turner. Congratulations to each of you. And now to the West Cabarrus High School Theater Program. West Cabarrus Theater received multiple awards at the North Carolina Theater Competition this past November, including the two top acting awards given by the North Carolina Theater Conference. Outstanding achievement in acting by both Trey Betler and Kaylee Henderson. Angelina Nieto was nominated for a Best Actress Award, and Gustavo Mesa was nominated for the Best Actor Award by the Blumenthal Performing Arts Society for their portrayals of Seymour and Audrey in the West Cabarrus High School production of Little Shop of Horrors. The Bloomy Awards were created to recognize and encourage and reward talent and achievement in musical theater by high school students in the greater Charlotte area. The Theater Director at West Cabarrus High School is Mrs. Annie Camp. Congratulations to each of you. And our final ensemble recognition this evening is the West Cabarrus High School Band Program. The West Cabarrus Wind Ensemble received a Superior Rating in Grade III and IV Literature at the 2022 Music Performance Assessment in March. MPA is the only state-sanctioned event that provides a summative standards-based assessment based on the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. Alex Lee was selected for the Carnegie Hall Honors Performance Series in New York City this past February. The Carnegie Honors was established in 1964 with the goal of distinguishing talented students and musicians for a once-in-a-lifetime performance experience at Carnegie Hall. Kane Brandt, Giabravo, and Lee Franklin from the West Cabarrus Band were nominated for a 2022 Bloomy Award in the category of Best Student Orchestra. The West Cabarrus Ensemble is one of only six high schools to receive a Bloomy nomination in this category. The Bloomy Awards were created to recognize, encourage, and reward talent and achievement in musical theater by high school students in the greater Charlotte area. The Band Director at West Cabarrus High School is Mrs. Emily McNeil. Congratulations to each of you. And finally, on behalf of myself and the visual and performing arts teachers of Cabarrus County Schools, I would just like to say a very fond thank you to our school board and our administration. It is truly a privilege to work for and with you and for and with your children.
Thank you, Bart. That was great. Bart? Can I ask one question? I had read somewhere, did we actually get 12 of the Bloomy nominations? Was it 12?
It was 11 or 12.
Because I read somewhere that we had gotten 12. Congratulations. I was so excited. Thank you so much. Outstanding.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to 4.10, Board of Education Student Intern Program Presentation. And we will have our board member, Mrs. Denise Adcock, to the podium. And for our viewing audience and those that are here with us tonight, after this presentation, we will take a brief recess.
Thank you, Board. I'm really excited to have Priya Punakar come up. She is one of our first semester students, and she and Yash Thacker decided that they wanted to do a service project, and we wanted to get an input from her of all of the outcomes that came from that. So she has actually got a presentation that she would like to give to the board that has all of the excellent outcomes that they accomplished.
Okay, hi, everyone. So this is a student project, student service project, one of the first ones conducted by the board. And this was all by Ms. Amy Jewell and Ms. Adcock. And so with their help, we were able to make this a complete success. Sorry. This project was, like, its purpose was to collect supplies from all around Cabarrus County and create care packages for students and families that were in need of basic hygiene supplies. So this could be soap, shampoo, sanitary pads, things whatnot like that. And it involved five schools. So it was West Cabarrus High, Cox Mill High School, JM Robinson High, Hickory Ridge High, and Mount Pleasant Elementary School. And with the help of these schools and their social workers, we were able to make this possible. So this was just the flyer that we used, and it just gave an idea of like what the dates were. And it stretched for around two to three months. So we can move on. So the first school was West Cabarrus High School. The social worker in charge of this project was Ms. Aronda Dunlap Elder. And with her help, they were able to receive around 200 donations. And these are just some pictures. The second one was Cox Mill High School. It was by Ms. Chelsea Wheeler. She was the social worker in charge. And it was also conducted by me and Yash. And we received around 300 donations. And we also received 50 prepackaged care packets from the students and community members and teachers. And yeah. And then JM Robinson High School. They said that they received donations enough to pack 100 care packets. They also received 100 prepackaged care packets. So in total, they had 200 packets made. And the social worker in charge was Ms. Elizabeth Batson. For Hickory Ridge High, they had Ms. Veronica Vincent as the social worker in charge, and they received around 250 donations. And then, last but not least, there is Mount Pleasant Elementary School. They said the social worker in charge was Ms. Elizabeth Baker, and they received multiple boxes full of donations. That's what they said. And so each school had a set amount of volunteers that were involved. And in total, we were able to gather around 110 volunteers. These were all students that just wanted to be a part of the community and help out. So they helped donate, and they also helped make the packages. But other people that were involved were like teachers, staff, community members, and even local churches. And they helped with donating items to make this a success. And these are some pictures that we all liked. And so in total, we were able to make around 300 packaged, 300 packages that we were able to give to those in need. So thank you all of you for helping support this project. And thank you, Ms. Adcock and Ms. Jewell, for this project.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this project was started and led by the two students, the board interns, and we are so proud of them for doing this. But they were efforts, were able to really join and unify our social workers, our schools, our students, and our community, which really shows how we can come together as a team. We can accomplish anything. So I would just like to give them a hand for that.
So I'd like to call the second semester students up just for, to receive their certificates for completion of the board intern program. This is Jonathan Luck and Camille Rogers. And I've asked him just to say a couple of things about what they've learned during this time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapiki, members of the board. My name is Camille Rogers, and I am a junior at Cox Mill High School. Over the past semester, I have served as one of the student interns for the board. It has been a great experience, and I want to say thank you for allowing me this position. This internship has given me a lot of insight as to how the school board operates and all the work that is done to help our schools run smoothly. One of the most interesting things I have done is attend meetings with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and be a participant in the NC Portrait of a Graduate. We have had two out of the three meetings, and in them, we discuss how we want to better prepare our students post-graduation and what steps need to be taken to get there. This has been a very cool, this has been a very cool, as these meetings have over 300 attendees, including superintendents, admin, teachers, parents, and student representatives, all from the southwest region of North Carolina. This has been an informative experience, and I have a lot more knowledge about what it means to be a board member and serve your it means to be a board member and serve your community every day. I want to thank you again for allowing me to serve as an intern for the board.
My name is Jonathan Luck. Who, and I am a student from the O.E. College of Technology. He is a senior. And throughout my semester as a Board of Education Student Intern, it's amazing to see how much I have learned throughout this program. And from the first board meeting in this very room, it was a surreal yet fascinating experience for me to explore the different departments of the education system and take place in various community meetings. This experience helped me explore different career paths that I can take within this field of interest. And as someone who is majoring in computer science, I can see myself starting up as an IT technician in this, in the Board of Education. This experience expanded my view of the education system as well, largely reviewing how large of a collaboration effort this system undergoes to ensure that students have a well-structured and experienced education. Most importantly, I worked as part of service projects such as the NC Portrait of a Graduate, enabling me to understand that critical thinking, communication, and adaptability have been key traits that remain important not only for teachers and staff, but also for students as they support each other and succeed in the future as they expand their knowledge. I would like to thank Ms. Adcock for providing this internship opportunity to me and to all members of the Board of Education and subsidiaries that helped to make this all possible. This has been a great experience for me and will be one step towards benefiting my community as I begin to head to my future pathway in career in college. It has been a pleasure to be part of the Board of Education Student Intern Program.
Wonderful job. Good luck. Wonderful job. Thank you. Well, that's what this job's all about, right, guys? So with that ends our recognitions. The Board of Education will take a five-minute recess. Thank you, and we will resume our Monday, May the 9th, 2022 Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting, and we will begin with our 5.01 approval of the minutes. May I have a motion that the board approve the minutes for the open session meetings for March 28th, 2022, April 4th, 2022, and April 11th, 2022? So may.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. And now we will move to our 6.01, which are the board chair, superintendent, and attorney comments. And the only thing I would like to start with tonight, we had a couple of questions on how committees and liaisons get appointed. I also want to read with, I think, guys, I sent another list out to all of you, who our liaisons are, so I'm just going to run that down real quick. And the board liaisons are appointed by the board chair. The committee members are appointed by the chair, the committee chair, and the staff collectively. We have the active living and recreation. Our liaison is Tim Fur. Athletics, Tim Fur, secondary Holly Grimsley. The budget committee is Denise Adcock, Keisha Sandage, and Holly Grimsley. The board hearings, there is a committee of the board, or all the board members can attend. Board agenda is the chair and the vice chair, myself and Ms. Blackwell. The Board of Education Task Force, that is myself, Carolyn Carpenter, and Laura Blackwell. The commissioners, the Board of Education is the chair and vice chair meetings that we have, is the chair, myself, and Ms. Blackwell. The Cabarrus County Education Foundation is Ms. Carpenter and myself. The calendar committee is Ms. Carpenter and Rob Walter. The child protection and fatality team is Ms. Sandage and myself. The city of Concord liaison is Laura Blackwell primary, Holly Grimsley secondary. The city of Harrisburg is Keisha Sandage. The city of Kannapolis is myself. The construction committee is Ms. Adcock and myself. The curriculum committee is Ms. Blackwell, Ms. Adcock, and Ms. Carpenter. Legal affairs committee is Ms. Blackwell and myself. The legislative agenda, Ms. Blackwell and myself. The MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, is Ms. Carpenter. The policy committee is Ms. Adcock, Ms. Sandage, and Ms. Carpenter. The realignment process, Mr. Walters and Ms. Blackwell. The safety committee, Ms. Blackwell and Ms. Carpenter. The school nutrition program is Ms. Carpenter. The student health advisory committee, known as SHAC, is Mr. Walter and Ms. Blackwell. The student and community engagement committee is Ms. Sandage and myself. The literature and supplemental materials committee is Ms. Blackwell as chair, Ms. Adcock, and Ms. Carpenter. And I will back up and notate that the student and community engagement committee, Ms. Sandage chairs that committee. The technology committee is Ms. Adcock and myself. The town of Midland liaison is Mr. Fur. Town of Mount Pleasant is myself. And the transportation planning committee is Mr. Walter and Mr. Fur. Any corrections or notations?
Did you mention the, oh, excuse me, the curriculum and instruction? There's that one listed on there.
I did, with you, Ms. Adcock.
Oh, okay. I just didn't catch that one. All right. Thank you very much.
That was a lot. So as you can tell, the board members have a lot of responsibilities with committees and liaison positions. The board calendar and the committee meetings are posted on the website under the Board of Education, and the Board of Education meets twice a month. The first Monday of the month is the work session, and the second is the business meeting. We would also like to say Happy Nurses Week, and thank you to all of our nurses out there in our school system and all that you do to keep our students safe. And with that, I will pass it to Dr. Kapiki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin, just a couple of observations I'd like to share with the community. You sit and you watch this evening what just took place in front of you, and I want to tell you, that's extraordinary and very unique. And it is unique to the Cabarrus County school systems. You should be very proud as a board of all the wonderful programs that you have endorsed and supported over the years, long before I came here and since I have come here. The one thing that is evident is this board supports the academics, the athletics, and the extracurricular activities, and that's evident today. It's also evident in my observations consistently and constantly as I work my way through the community and attend. community and attend many different events. In the last week alone, I've, I don't know if I've gone to an athletic event, I have yet to go to one where I haven't seen Mr. Fur there. Doesn't matter the school he's around. Mr. Walter, I've seen him at several events this past week, I've seen Mrs. Adcock at several. Carolyn, I've seen you just about everywhere, and you were at the schools reading, appreciate that. Keisha and Laura, you know, leading those committees and then going to each other's committee meetings and supporting each other, that's phenomenal. And this is all done by the woman to the right of me, our chair, Holly Grimsley. She has held us accountable, she has preached transparency, she has preached honesty, she has actively sought community input, and has made that one of her mantras on this board. That's not easy, but she's been very open and honest about that in her leadership. And it's commendable to the board for anointing you again as the chair of this board, because you've done a fantastic job in leading us, and we do appreciate that. It's not easy, but I can tell you they have a very high-functioning board, and if you don't get that by what you're seeing tonight, I don't know what else we can say to you and by some of the actions that are taking place. And I think that Ms. Grimsley deserves a lot of credit for getting us all to kind of meld and work together. It's not an easy job, you've done a great job leading us, and we do appreciate that. So I thank you for that. And that's important for people to see that, because the board is working together. Within the last seven days, I've talked to every individual board member for different reasons at different times, seeking advice, and they've always been there available, and they've been able to access themselves, be accessible to me, to share with me some of their thoughts and insights, so I appreciate that. But you really are to be commended, because when you watch what's happening today, that does not happen without great leadership and a great chairwoman and six other members of a board that are working together, and so I thank you for that. And again, when you think of the things that are going wrong in our world, and you see these kids coming through here this evening, if that doesn't, John Basile said it perfect, if that doesn't give you hope, and make you look at the glass as half-full, and seeing a lot of optimism in the things that are going on here, I got to tell you, I don't know where you're looking, because every corner I turn in this school district, I see nothing but excellence. And this community should be extremely proud of what's taking place here. And our kids represent us well. Scholarships handed out, military appointments handed out, students achieving at state and national levels across the board, winning state championships, winning academic championships. I'm sitting on my deck this weekend for five minutes of peace, and I get a text that our Vex robotics team is competing against 40 other countries in the world, and they just made it to a final round. That's unbelievable, and that speaks so highly to the great teachers we have, to the great instructors we have, to the commitment of this community, and to the things that are going on in the school system. We should be very, very proud of what we have going on here. That also doesn't happen without the wonderful teachers that we have. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. Our students come through here tonight, we acknowledge and we recognize them, but I want to make it very clear, we all understand the impact that our teachers have on these students, and we thank them for the amazing work that they do day in and day out. And none of this happens without great teachers, and none of this happens without extraordinary instruction in the classroom. So to our teachers, I say thank you, and I appreciate it. Yes, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, but we appreciate you every single day. And I also want to tell you, make this very clear, because I've heard this in different factions and different conversations, your board values you, respects you, and wants to do more for you. So keep that conversation going. And when I say more, none of us have all of the answers, but good dialogue, good conversations among us, among administrators, among teachers, among board members within our community, we will continue to function at outstanding high levels. Our goal is to be the best school system in the nation, and we're not going to rest until we feel as though we've achieved that. And I'm very confident that what I witnessed on a daily basis, and what I see tonight, I just shake my head and say, we're real close, if not already there. We are a very unique school system, and we should be very proud of that. So to our teachers, just thank you. Deeply thank you for all the work that you're doing on a consistent basis to make our kids shine like they do. We are completely aware of the excellence that you demonstrate in the classroom. I'd also like to congratulate Cox Mill Elementary School. I believe they were the first team to win the battle of the books and achieve the regional competition championship, and hopefully they have a state competition. I was able to spend some time with those kids this past week, with Allison Moore, the principal, and their teachers, and it's incredible what they did. I mean, they had to read over 15 books, they had to answer a series of questions, they had to compete against other school systems. It's not easy what they did, and to be the first among many is a really cool achievement, so I commend them for that. We've begun our community connections, we're out there with the public, asking parents for their input and community members for input. We have been at three high schools thus far, we'll hit the other seven over the next couple of weeks. I encourage anybody that would like to to come out, it's open to everyone, whether it's two or three people, or 30 or 40 people, we want to hear what you have to say about how do we make our school system better. So those events are coming up, we have one tomorrow night at West Cabarrus High School. I encourage anyone that would like to to please come and attend, and to look at our website under the new and noteworthy section, because the schedule is there for you. It's also Mental Health Awareness Month, and Asian American Heritage Month, so we're celebrating those two events, as well as, as was already noted by Chairman Grimsley, that it's National School Nurse Day on May 11th, so please thank your nurses. Not sure where we would be without them, especially under the circumstances we worked with this year. Folks, it's May 9th, we're coming up on the end of a full school year, where we have been back in person the entire year. Yes, we've had some trials and tribulations, but we have successfully navigated a full school year. Don't want to put the cart in front of the horse, but we're there. What was the horse that won the Kentucky Derby?
Rich Strike.
Rich Strike? Well...
Eighty to one.
There you go. I feel like we're about there, we're crossing the finish line, right? We also have a celebration this week, our celebration of service bankers on May 11th, we're going to celebrate a lot of our dedicated employees and our retirees, and celebrate their careers and their dedication to helping build a fantastic school system. And just a quick reminder to folks that May 10th is a professional development day, which is tomorrow, and May 17th is election day, which is next Tuesday. We will be closed, it's just, it'll be the day for our professional development. I encourage everyone to get out and vote, and Memorial Day, May 30th, we will also be out. So I just want to close on that positive note, and just say to people, be thankful for the people that we have working in the system, because the results are just incredible, and the leadership of this board, again, under our chair, has been phenomenal, and I think that really needs to be stead and stayed. And I thank the board for consistently, constantly, and always putting up with me when I reach out to talk to you and seek your advice, because it truly has been helpful, and I appreciate that. And don't stop being a presence in our schools, because we need you there, and we need you to be seen, so thank you.
Well, I was not prepared for that, but thank you, I really appreciate it, and I want to say, a board chair, no matter who they are, is only as successful as the board, and the staff, and the superintendent's relationship that works together. And I have, this is my 12th year, I've been board chair five, and I have worked under three different superintendents. So I know firsthand how important that is, and I just want to thank each of you, because you have absolutely, you've hit the ground running, as Ms. Sandage said at our last meeting, but this board is totally engaged, and I really appreciate it. There is no way one person couldn't get all this work done, and all of you, I won't go there, you shouldn't have started that tonight, because I will be coming off the board this year. But I just want to tell all of you how important you are to this system, and it is all about kids. I had to do a video last week, and the one thing that I think I said that, you know, really hits home is, every decision we make is for kids, it has got to be about the kids. You know, we talk about our teachers, they're wonderful, they touch every one of our kids every day, and they are so very important, but it is about our kids. They've all taken a really hard knock in these last two years, and you know, we've got some making up to do, and this system has worked really hard to do that. But I just want to thank each of you, because you answer that phone every time I call, you volunteer for everything that we ask you to do, you chair committee meetings, you know, you're a part of everything that goes on in this community. I'm not sure people understand how much we touch that, and education touches that. So thank you for all that you do, and a special thank you to what you have done coming in new, and we can't thank you enough.
Work team.
Yes, thank you, so I'll give you a hand. And we would also, next in line, like to have our board attorney comments, which we will also thank you for what you've done with us this new year coming in as well, and all that you've done to get us moving forward in a progressive way as well.
Well, Jonathan and I are very pleased and proud to be serving the board, and we look forward to do that for many, many years to come. With that, last week, Mr. Walter had some questions about what's on your consent agenda in regards to amended lease agreement, Roberta Road Middle School, ancillary to Roberta, the agency and lease agreements with Arbrown McAllister STEM. His question was involving under the lease, why is it under the Roberta Road Middle School there is no end date in February 2042? And the reason why there's not is because the county is using that as collateral in a refund, or what we commonly know as a refinance, and as a result, until that refinance goes through, they won't know the date about when that note matures. So therefore, the date was left empty, or blank, is February of 2042, if I remember correctly. So that's, it's a 20-year lease, and that's the reason why. Second is, then the question was, well, why does the Arbrown McAllister have an end date? And the reason why that has an end date is because that is not being used as collateral, that financing has already been approved, so you know when that end date is, so it's a 20-year lease, so that's the reason why it's there. Any further questions, or does that confuse y'all?
So eventually, we'll have another amendment.
Sir?
So eventually, we'll have another amendment with that end date, or is that...
Well, there's two things you can, it's not necessary, because if you leave it as February 2042, then it goes along with the expiration of the note. So, but if this board wants it, it can be amended, it can be done that way, it doesn't have to be.
Well, if you're saying it doesn't have to be, I don't think we need to...
I would agree, but y'all are the client, I want to make you happy. Anything else?
I think we're good, thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
And this may, I mean, we've talked about our legislative agenda, but we have talked about for years and years, about getting the sales tax basically back to us automatically. You know, we kind of go around the, go around the back end to get to the front end. Where do we stand right now on that? Because, you know, we pay it, and then the county eventually gets it back to us? Where are we with that kind of legislation to get us to get it automatically back to us, instead of us having to pay it and then get it back?
So we're getting ready to address the legislative agenda in just a little bit, but we did not have that on there. We'll need to get some feedback from the state, and actually from the county, and I'm not sure if Ms. Herndon has been a part of those conversations as well. So that is one of the conversations that we need to have. You know, the county normally takes care of that on their end, so...
Because, you know, normally, I mean, we're building something, I mean, we're talking big bucks, I mean, because we're, you know, especially as our building goes up tremendously, I mean, when you're looking at 107 million dollars, I mean, that's a lot of money. And so, you know, if we didn't have to pay that out to start with, that could be, you know, money that could buy a lot of books, or do a lot for our children, or, you know, so we really need to be looking at that more closely. So I just wondered, I thought maybe you might know something on that, so...
I don't know, but my experience is sometimes when you're trying to be innovative, like y'all have always been, and wanting to push things forward, sometimes when you get it outside of this county, you're pushing a string. So we just got, y'all got to make that string a little bit tauter, so you can get it done, but I know that y'all can do it.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will move to 7.01, which are committee reports, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage.
So thank you. Two things, just to update. So the Schools and Community Engagement Committee, we have accepted over 100 applications, so that means you guys are fully engaged and want to be a part, and I appreciate that, thank you. So what will happen next is I'll work with the board chair to identify those applicants, and then let you guys know by the end of the week who's been accepted. I am hoping to stay under 25 committee members, I don't want us to get too big on us, but hopefully I'll let you guys know who's been selected by the end of this week. Our first meeting will be at Concord Middle School, and it will be on 5/26, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the media center. All right, the next update is, I have applied for and accepted a, I guess it's a committee, or, yeah, it's a committee, position on the Cabarrus Health Alliance, Cabarrus Recovery and Resiliency Coalition. So they have identified some draft goals. Their first meeting is on May 12th, which is this Thursday, and it is from 6:00 to 7:30. So what their draft goals are as follows, provide feedback and input on how COVID has impacted Cabarrus County, strategize on recommendations for moving forward to recover, strategize on recommendations for supporting resiliency efforts for youth, for teachers, for healthcare workers, and for all community members, provide feedback and input to local leaders on how to support the community moving forward, and provide suggestions on the use of additional funding resources that may come to the local community. I'm not sure how many members are on that committee, I just saw it in the paper, and I thought it was, I want to be a part of what's going on in our community, and I think that this board wants to be a part of what's going on in our community, so what better way for one of the board members to be on that committee? So, I will give an update next meeting, as to how the first meeting goes. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that, Dr. Kapiki, thank you for all of the accolades today. You know how I feel about what you have come into this district and done for us, so I appreciate you just as much as you appreciate us. And we will continue to be in those schools. I've seen every single last board member in a school, so we are definitely invested in what's happening in our school system, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did attend the Student Health Advisory Committee meeting last week, and there's a ton of stuff that's going on, and I'll go through some of it. What was really impressive is the work our student services team does to get grants for our school system, and the care, you know, just the desire they have to help people. Just starting, some of these things that I listed, again, I won't be completely accurate, but I'll try to review what my notes was. We have $200,000 ABC grant, which funds some school positions, I think it also funds our PAST program, where we've had 73 students go through that. There's a $220,000 mental health grant that we've got, and this is an opportunity to serve families that can't afford some mental health care outside of the school system, so there's some outside agencies that we've contracted with that will provide these students' services. So far, one provider had 44 kids that were able to get some services there. So this is a $132,000 well-being grant, and this is really to, has emergency support for the homeless students, Kenny Vento, everything from tutoring, extra tutoring things, to gift cards and counseling, and just kind of amazing stuff that we're doing just for that. There's another one, new one that is kind of interesting, this is a $239,000 homecoming grant, and essentially, this is really to try to find those students that before COVID were with us, and after COVID are not. They're either homeschooling, or they're not in the system, but this is essentially money to find those students, and see if we can get them back in our school system. There's, I think it was, at one point, there was 5% of students, again, I'm not sure exactly what group this is, but there's a certain population that's a 5%. Before COVID, it's up to 9.4% that are homeschooling, so there's a gap there, and trying to figure out what the needs are. Not necessarily that they come back to us, but figuring out what that information is, who knew there was a grant for that? So, and there's some smaller grants that we're talking about, there's a $5,000 grant for hygiene products for some students in some of our schools, and then there's another $4,000 grant that they found for some mental health-related programming. So just really hats off to our team to find this stuff, and to really help our students and their families. And the only other one that I had noted here is there's potentially a policy coming back to us that would go over the use of Narcan, Narcan that they use for overdoses. A lot of times, what's happening around the area, that apparently our nurses will be able to do that, and it'll be coming to us at some point, but that's being reviewed at this point. So that's an update on the School Health Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Walter, and a lot of the involvement to those committees, the credit goes to Amy Louder, Amy Jewell, John Basile, so they're your three key connections on a lot of those topics that you mentioned, so I just wanted to shout out to them for the great work that they do too, so thank you.
Mr. Fur?
Really have a committee report, but I will comment on athletics. As you could see tonight, we were very, had a very successful... As you could see tonight, we were very, had a very successful school year in athletics and state playoffs, and a lot of our team sports start tomorrow night. So I urge all of you, if you get a chance, to try to catch a, a game or a match or something, because it's fastly coming to an end. And hopefully, we can, with the summer, spring sports, we maybe can get some more state champions and teams and individuals. Thanks.
Ms. Blackwell?
So we did have our first literature and supplemental material meeting last Wednesday, May the 4th. I definitely want to express appreciation to our incredibly engaged committee members. We also had a tremendously large crowd, I think, and that was wonderful. And I appreciate everyone being so engaged and respectful. We briefly introduced ourselves and then went right to work. Jay White, our board attorney, went over policy 3200. We listened to some of the initial proposed changes to update the policy. Each member had an opportunity for suggestions and questions. We then had explanation for policy 3210. However, due to time constraints, questions and suggestions will go to Jay White, and that is due by June the 1st. The committee got a quick lesson on the access of Destiny, which is the online resource that is available to view books in each school. And then our next meeting will be June the 15th. Location to be decided, but it will be at one of our schools at 6 o'clock. And we will go over the suggestions and questions that have been submitted to Jay and then revise those policies as we see fit and then move forward, hopefully, with submitting those to the Policy Review Committee. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Oh, I've just had all kinds of fun this week. I've, I've been able to give money away, which I love to do, which given to some of our students, because I've been able to give some scholarship money to some of our students. And when I'm able to give that to these students in Cabarrus County, it really makes me happy, because we were able to, what, now you will like this, Holly, to Mount Pleasant students, we were able to give over $8,000 to Mount Pleasant High School students. Now, don't jump up and down, Holly, but that was $8,000, and that was for the Cabarrus County Fair Scholarship. And both of them went to Mount Pleasant students, which really made me happy, because I, I really liked to see that, because one of them was actually going to become a animal, a large animal vet was what she was wanting to go into. But it was two, they got $4,000 apiece. It was Lanny Rose Lancaster and Angel Thompson, Thomas, is it Tom, Thomas, Tom, Thompson? And then Concord High student, Gracie Smith, she got $2,000, but that was for that one. Then I actually got to attend one of the award ceremonies for early college, and Mr. Walters was with me on that one, and we got to give $1,000 for the Salvation Army Women's Auxiliary one. And this young man, we gave $1,000, and that was for William Rucker. So that really, that was really great. And then on top of that, like I say, it was a fun week for me, because I got to go to four of the schools and deliver gifts to the teachers for the, the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. They send out a catalog to the parents and to the different schools, and the parents or individuals can buy gifts for the teachers of an appreciation. And then they, they wrap up the gifts, or it can be gift baskets or muffins or different things, but the parents can pick it out. And then they're, the people on the committee will deliver them. And I was able to go to four different schools, and the teachers were so appreciative, but then the parents, they got to pick it out, but they really enjoyed that. So I got to take gifts, baskets and things to the teachers at four different schools, but got to go into schools and see the children, and it was, it was really, it was really exciting. And so the teachers really appreciated that. But talking about the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, they're going to have a big event on Saturday night, the Game of Games, and this is a fundraiser. And that money that they raise for that goes to help grants for our teachers. We talk about what the teachers do and what they need. They apply for those grants, and that helps them in the classroom so much. And this is a fundraiser for them, and it's really a lot of fun, and they're going to be having into the Cabarrus County Country Club on, on Saturday night, the 14th, 14th in that Saturday night. And for, I think it's from seven, six, is it six or seven, six or seven on Saturday night, but you can still get tickets. And if you want to go and have a good time and help our teachers and help the foundation, please come out, and we'll get you a ticket. You just come on out there. But the foundation does a great job. And so I just wanted to make you aware of that. And again, just like everybody else, tonight has been wonderful to see, you know, we've heard, you know, everybody has struggled the last two and a half years, but what we've seen here tonight shows what a great job our teachers are doing, what the students are doing. They are just doing really a great job. And tonight, when we tried to get in here, this room was packed with the parents, with the children. It was really good to see. And I just want to congratulate everybody that was here tonight, and thank you for giving me the time.
Can I ask a question, Carolyn? I was just wanting to see, do we know where folks can get tickets if they want to support?
We'll get you a ticket if you want a ticket. We can get it to Amy. You can call the foundation, their phone number's listed, and I'm sure they'll get you a ticket if you want a ticket. I'm sure you probably could get one there at the door, but Amy golfed there. They have got tickets. I'm sure I can get you a phone number.
Oh, I got my tickets. I just wanted to make sure everybody else knew.
We'll have to put it on the website.
Yeah, on the website. You can look on the website under Cabarrus County Education Foundation. They do have a phone number on the website, Cabarrus County Education Foundation. And they do have a website, and they list that Game of Games on that website. And so.
Do you have you?
Huh?
The event is this Saturday. It's from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Seven to 11:00.
At the Cabarrus Country Club.
Cabarrus Country Club, and it is fun.
Thank you. I'm sure they appreciate that. Ms. Adcock?
I don't even know what to say. Okay. So I'm going to give a shout out to our rising juniors and seniors just to go out and fill out an application to be a Board of Education student intern next year, 2022, 2023 school year. And the application is on our CCS website and our CCS app.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to a presentation of our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ashton Berry, 8.01, with our Cabarrus County School Spotlight on Educators.
I'm here to bring more joy tonight. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kupicki. Thank you for another opportunity to highlight the amazing things happening in schools across Cabarrus County. The teachers that you will hear about tonight, like so many across our district, continue to go above and beyond to strive for and achieve excellence each and every day through their pedagogy and their practice. Tonight, I want to present you with a spotlight on a special group of teachers that is near and dear to my heart, our amazing beginning teachers. In North Carolina, teachers participate in their respective district beginning teacher programs for three years after their start date. During that time, they are assigned mentors, attend intentional professional development that aligns with their district's goals and expectations, work with their professional learning networks, and receive other layers of support to navigate their first three years in the profession. It is no easy task, and they always rise to the occasion. It is worth noting that our current beginning teachers, as of this year, have never had what is considered to be a normal school year, no matter if they are year one, two, or three. They are brilliant, powerful, resilient, innovative, and the future of this profession that we love. Tonight, you will hear about six of the many incredible beginning teachers in Cabarrus County schools and their impact on instruction and/or school and classroom culture. Some of their administrators passed along glowing remarks that I will share tonight, and some were kind enough to create short videos for us to view about their positive experiences as CCS beginning teachers. And first up, as you can see here, we have Michaela Malachowski. Michaela currently serves as our 2021, 2022 CCS Beginning Teacher of the Year, and I've had the pleasure to work with her over this academic year. The BTOY program is sponsored by the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, otherwise known as NCAT. In addition to being a phenomenal first grade teacher at R. Brown McAllister, Michaela serves CCS in a plethora of other ways already. She helps lead and facilitate our district's first-ever Beginning Teacher Advisory Council in order to provide valuable insight and perspective that can help strengthen our BT program as well as other systems in CCS. The BT Advisory Council will also be a part of upcoming listening sessions with representatives from State Superintendent Truitt's office in the near future, making a positive difference for beginning teachers across the Southwest region. She also served as part of the selection committee for the 2022, 2023 CCS Teacher of the Year. As you can see, Michaela is already a strong teacher leader in our district. According to Principal Blanchard, Ms. Malachowski has worked to get, to know her students and families individually, and she is able to help them make connections that are meaningful in texts, topics, and content. She has a can-do attitude and is a true problem solver. She is always receptive to feedback and eager to grow her practice. Her instructional philosophy emphasizes the importance of teaching the whole child. She utilizes morning meetings and instructional decisions to help make connections between the classroom and the students' personal backgrounds and experiences. Recently, Ms. Malachowski celebrated STEM Focus Week with her students and challenged their thinking with the dinosaur conundrum and a PBL on dinosaurs. PBL stands for Problem or Project-Based Learning. Students were able to create their own dinosaurs and even shared a little bit about them in an animation. Per Ms. Mao, they worked really hard and the results are amazing. This type of 21st century instruction is commonplace for our first graders, thanks to the work of wonderful teachers like Ms. Malachowski. Michaela's principal also passed along one of her student group's dinosaur animations for us to watch tonight. If you will click the text box, it will take you to that very short clip.
I'm spiking swords, and I want to eat meat. I am raised in the ocean.
All right. We can go back to the slides. And we can go to the fourth slide now. Thank you so much. Next, we have Emily Taylor, a phenomenal third-year music teacher at Bethel Elementary School. According to Ms. Taylor's principal, Julie Barbie, Ms. Taylor's class has quickly become a favorite encore class for Bethel students. On any given day, you will find and hear Ms. Taylor's students working in collaborative groups to create music that aligns to not only music standards, but also other content areas like social studies, history, or science, and to their personal interests. Students are taken on virtual field trips as they learn about a variety of instruments from various countries around the world. Students learn about music from countries that are represented by the students at Bethel as well as countries that are home to a particular instrument or genre of music. Over the course of the past two years, Ms. Taylor has created such a following that students from kindergarten to fifth grade have begged their parents for ukuleles. "What an inspiration Ms. Taylor has been," her principal says, "and continues to be to the students and staff at Bethel. She is an amazing asset to Cabarrus County schools." Our next beginning teacher is Brandon Moore, an English teacher at West Cabarrus High School. Brandon is a CCS graduate of 2016, I believe the Concord Spiders, and attended Appalachian State University to earn his bachelor's degree in secondary English education. Brandon makes a huge impact on instruction and school culture at West Cabarrus, and he was kind enough to record a short video for us to watch tonight about his positive experience in the CCS Beginning Teacher Program.
Hi, my name is Brandon Moore. I am a seventh-year teacher at West Cabarrus High School. I teach English II and Speech and English. I am also a Cabarrus County Schools graduate from Concord High School, class of 2016. After graduating from Appalachian State University, I knew that I had to return home to teach and work here in Cabarrus County Schools. Cabarrus County Schools offers so many wonderful supports from the county level all the way down to each individual soul. I am blessed and honored to have so many wonderful mentors, instructional coaches, and I couldn't ask for a better family than the West Cabarrus School of Greens. CCS offers so much continued support and effort to each and every beginning teacher. It's unmatched in how well they take care of us and support us, and it has definitely guided my decision in staying here for the long run. I am honored to be able to give back to the community and school system that gave so much to me, and I hope in my life and my work, it will surround us in a student service. Hi, my name is Brandon. I am a seventh-year teacher at West Cabarrus High School.
You ever seen that meme that says, "I have so many tabs open and I don't know where the music's coming from?" All right, next up, thank you so much, we have Ms. Carrie Rowe from Hickory Ridge High School. One of Ms. Rowe's administrators, who was here tonight but had to leave, Tiana Graves, explains, "Since the beginning of Ms. Rowe's career here at HRHS, she has proven to have a never-give-up attitude with her colleagues and students. As a beginning teacher in the structured learning program during the pandemic, she strived to provide the best virtual instruction and interaction with both her students and their parents by utilizing innovative technology and techniques to meet the needs of her individual students. At the beginning of the 2021, 2022 school year, Ms. Rowe was met with the challenge of having more students with varying disabilities than she has been accustomed to as a first-year teacher. She immediately reached out for supports from her cooperating teacher and used her workdays to meet with and take tours of classrooms that were similar to hers, so that she could gain ideas and better serve her students. Due to the number of students in her classroom with varying needs and behaviors, Ms. Rowe developed stations and rotations for her students to support their need for movement and to present a sense of regular high school processes of changing classes. She has also worked with her colleagues throughout the building to build on the strengths of her students and provide them with opportunities for socialization outside of the SLP classroom. Through her advocacy for her students, she has been able to push them beyond their expected growth measures by exposing them to other social situations daily and to provide them with the best opportunities for her students to grow both academically and socially within the school setting." Our next beginning teacher is Zach Bowen, a social studies teacher at Central Cabarrus High School. Zach is also a CCS graduate and attended both UNC Chapel Hill and UNC Charlotte. Mr. Bowen is a proud member of the CCHS football staff, and he is also the junior varsity head coach. His principal, Dustin Schu, says, "Mr. Bowen has capitalized on each opportunity to learn and grow as a first-year teacher. He is humble and eager to get feedback and has participated in the beginning teacher activities with a true dedication to growing as a professional educator." Because of his learning-focused approach, Mr. Bowen has quickly become a beloved, well-respected teacher and colleague. CCHS is proud of the ways in which Mr. Bowen embodies the Viking spirit. Like Mr. Moore, Mr. Bowen also recorded a short video for us to watch tonight about his experience as a CCS BT. about his experience as a CCS BT.
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you guys for having me tonight. My name is Zachary Bowen. I'm a social studies teacher and assistant football coach at Central Cabarrus High School. Before I get started with talking about my experience as a first-year teacher in CCS, let me just say, thank you guys so much for having me tonight. And thank you specifically to Mrs. Lee and Abby for thinking of me to come on tonight, and whether it be virtual or in person, and speak to you guys about my experience. So, thank you for that, and it's a true honor to do this on behalf of the BTs, and specifically the social studies BTs in our county. My experience as a first-year teacher in Cabarrus County has been exhilarating. From the first day when I stood atop the county to now being a full-time teacher and assistant coach, it's been nothing but great. I mean, I truly do enjoy what I do, and most of the courses due to the great students we have in the county, but also the great support from other teachers at my school, the administration of Central Cabarrus has been flawless. And it's just been overall an amazing experience getting involved and getting to work with these students and these other teachers, learning from them, and also sharing my ideas and bringing what I know I can do well to the table. It's been something that has been truly awesome to get to do, and I look forward to doing it in the future. And just a quick word about Mrs. Happily and those working with us. As a full BT cohort, since before even this whole school year started, dating back in summer, we did our orientation. We've had tremendous professional development opportunities. We've had an opportunity to get personal help, one-on-one with Mrs. Happly and the other people as well to come and lesson plan with us and discuss problems we're having, things we're doing well, things we have questions about. Everything's been really, really great, and support's been second to none. And then also getting a chance to have a personal PD session with our other members of our cohort to bounce ideas off each other and share our experiences as we all kind of get used to this whole profession together. It's been absolutely great. So, overall, I'll sum up and just say it's been a great experience. Again, thank you guys so much for having me tonight, and I'm very thankful I got a chance to share my thoughts, and I'm just really happy to be a part of Cabarrus County Schools and Central Cabarrus. So, thank you guys again, and good Vikings.
All right. All right. Dr. Dylan Horn is the final spotlight of the evening. Administrator Nicole Jones explains, "Dr. Horn joined the faculty of Northwest Cabarrus High School in January, and though they have only been on staff for a short period of time, they have already made a significant impact on our school community. As a civil engineer by trade, Dr. Horn begins or brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the STEM, engineering, and robotics classes that they teach. Students praise Dr. Horn for creating a classroom environment where it is safe to fail as they are encouraged to learn through inquiry and trial and error. Additionally, Dr. Horn has developed meaningful working relationships with students and staff members, serving as the advisor for the robotics team and working collaboratively with colleagues to develop interdisciplinary learning opportunities for students. Dr. Horn challenges students to inquire, collaborate, and problem-solve, and their principal states, 'We are so glad that Dr. Horn joined the Trojan Nation.'" I would like to take a moment to congratulate and thank these fantastic CCS beginning teachers for their unwavering dedication to their students and public education, even through such challenging times over the course of the last three academic years, which have been their entire career. They are rock stars, and they are the bright future of the teaching profession. Our school district is better because each and every one of them are in it, and they are all incredible and irreplaceable assets to Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you very much.
That was a great presentation, Ms. Berry. Absolutely.
When I say they are the treasure trove of CCS, that is what I mean.
That was great. Thank you very much. Okay, so, Dr. Kapicki and I have just talked about our comments. We've missed a couple of items, and we would like to go back just a little bit before we move on to the consent agenda.
Thank you. A good segue to Ashton's presentation this evening would be to ask our chief academic officer, Mrs. Sarah Reeves, to speak. Sarah's going to give the board a quick overview of the mentoring programs that we have available for our beginning teachers. Mrs. Reeves?
Awesome. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I believe we have just a few slides. Just wanted to share with you all a little bit about how we support our phenomenal educators in this district, and I will say this is one of the bright spots that I truly believe is a tremendous selling point in our recruitment efforts, is just the amazing amount of support that we're able to provide each of our individual educators. And so, I really look at this specifically in a multi-pronged approach and how we support. And so, it starts with our collaboration with our tremendous human resources department, and we start out with our new teacher orientation that starts the week prior to all of our teachers coming back to school and being able to bring them back a week ahead of time and getting them acclimated to the way that we do things in Cabarrus County, but also just providing that level of support. What does it look like to manage a classroom full of students? What does our curriculum look like? What does multi-tiered systems of support truly mean? And how can you really provide a world-class education to each individual student in your room? And then from there, obviously, we have a lot of school-based mentors and lead mentors. Specifically, you heard about one tremendous one that is now our Teacher of the Year, who are able to support and foster that, the ability to support in a way that I think only a teacher gets, the day in life of what it looks like to be a classroom teacher in this building, how to troubleshoot, what do deadlines look like, how to manage your time, how to manage the social-emotional components that go along with being a teacher. And then what you heard a lot about today was the tremendous amount of support that the academic services team, specifically our specialists, are able to provide our teachers, which we are really, really proud of. And so, this year, that has looked a little bit different, and I feel like that has been a testament to the specialists going out to our beginning teachers, both in years one and two, because obviously, our year twos last year looked really different for them, and saying, "What do you need?" This looked like our specialists going into the classroom and modeling lessons for them, sitting down with them one-on-one and collaborating. What does highly effective lesson planning look like? How can we support you? And then really being able to support in a coaching framework. So, you heard from many of our amazing beginning teachers, they were the directors in terms of what support looked like, and I think it worked really well, and we continue to look forward to fostering those relationships as we move forward. And so, here's just a few photos of the work and what it has looked like. Just really, it is about showing them what this looks like and helping them along the way, walking alongside them, making sure that they feel supported, that we are doing everything that we possibly can to make sure that not only do they have the curriculum and the resources to be successful in the classroom, but also if they individually need something, either both themselves or the building-level principal obviously can reach out to us for support. And so, for elementary, we have also pivoted a little bit. So, you've heard a lot about letters training and what that means for our beginning teachers. And so, we have been able to provide more on-demand, optional professional developments at the elementary level so that they can really focus in on the science of reading professional development. And then at the secondary level, they are actually going to be meeting together as a cohort for this upcoming workday to talk about what does end-of-year look like? How are you long-range planning as you move into the summer? And so, just very grateful for our specialists in the work that they are leading. Any questions?
Board members, any comments or questions? Hearing none, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, just a comment. I just wanted to thank all the new teachers. It's been a tumultuous time, and just to see that we're still getting educators who truly want to be a part of children's lives in our community, that's absolutely amazing. So, I just want to say thank you, and then thank you also for the previous presentation, Ashton, I appreciate that.
And lastly, this evening, I've asked Mr. Rusty Parker to give us kind of an update on CTE and to speak a little bit about our CTE programs.
This may be a little different from the Career and Technical Education presentations I've done in the past. I thought this evening, since he asked me to speak, if I would talk about CTE in a very broad perspective. So, this might be a little bit different from a presentation I've done in the past, but vocational education in the past was seen as a program for students who did not go to college. As late as the 1980s, vocational education was still seen as a program for the non-college-bound students. Throughout the past several years and through five iterations of the Carl Perkins legislation, Career and Technical Education has changed drastically into a program that is very strategically designed to support every student in our school system, not just the non-college-bound. In Cabarrus County Schools, we believe that every student will have a career someday, and our goal is to help every student find their own career direction so they can lead fulfilling lives for themselves and for their families. The Cabarrus County Schools' CTE vision, mission, and purpose statements are all very student-centered. They were created to provide guidance to our district staff as they help students find their career direction. Our vision statement reads, "Students prepared to pursue their direction and purpose." Again, very student-centered and very focused on purpose and direction. Our mission statement says, "Inspiring students, creating futures, and building community." And then our purpose statement says, "Every student in Cabarrus County Schools will graduate career and college-ready." I thought it was very ironic today that we had our academic services meeting, and Sarah Reeves talked to us about finding our why, because that's actually what I was going to talk about next, is about finding our why. The discussion actually stems from Simon Sinek's book, Find Your Why. As we were talking today about why, I thought about the purpose of Career and Technical Education. The very focus of CTE programs is to help students find their why. When people ask me what Career and Technical Education is, I tell them, "It's a program to help students find their purpose, their reason for being here, and technically finding their why. To help them find what they can contribute to society, that's the goal. Why are they on this planet? Is it because to help others by being a nurse, possibly? We have a pathway for that. It could be their purpose is to repair cars or work on that type of automotive industry, but we have a pathway for that, too. Our goal is to help them find their why before they graduate." In Cabarrus County Schools, our CTE department has over 135 teachers, 10 school-level coordinators, and six central office employees, including me. In our department, we have 45 career pathways for students to pursue with excellence, with excellent curriculum, for our students to learn marketable skills so they can enter the workforce successfully. Our belief that CTE is for all students led to the development of our career continuum, where students at every grade level from kindergarten to 12th grade take part in a variety of career-focused activities to help them find their career direction. Our CTE team works diligently to develop students' soft skills or professional skills and provide real-world on-the-job training. This year, our team added several new credentials. We added several new work-based learning options. We increased the number of business partnerships and hosted a very successful Career Connections Day at the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center, which I appreciate all of you that came. Our team is made up of people who help students find their why each and every day, and I'm very proud of our team in CCS. To follow up on the topic of finding our why, I'll share a personal note about myself just a little bit to be transparent. When I was in high school, I was very much the overachiever. I was the one that was an officer in every club. I worked a part-time job. I was student body president of my school my senior year, so I was a major overachiever. But a funny thing happened on the way to Appalachian State University that year is I really lost my why. I don't know why I ended up at Appalachian. I didn't, I went because mom and dad wanted me to. But I really did not know why I was going to be there. And I look back now, and I think I bounced from major to major because I really didn't have a career direction. And then I bounced from job to job once I graduated again. I still didn't have a career direction. And a lot of times, what drives me in my why in CTE is because I know how it feels to not have your career direction. And so, my goal every day is to help students find that career direction so that they leave high school knowing what they're going to do, or at least have an idea, but not wait till they're in their 30s before they find their career direction. In 2000, I met my wife, who was a teacher, and she told me about lateral entry process and how I could come into teaching my business with my business degree. In August 2001, I became a business education teacher. I became a CTE teacher, and my life has been, has never been the same since. After I became a CTE teacher, I started to understand how powerful career and technical education could be for a student. I saw it in the classroom every day. I saw it how it affected students every single day. And while I was in the classroom, I decided that I never wanted a student to feel as lost as I did before I became a teacher. I am a big believer that you can go to college and be college-ready, but not be career-ready. I became a career-ready when I fully understood why I was going to college and what I was supposed to be doing, and when I found my career purpose, I knew exactly what I was supposed to be doing. Career and technical education is more than a pathway to a job. It's more than vocational education in that term that we used to use many years ago. It is the very reason we teach all our children in this school district to push them to be their very best. Career and technical education helps students have a plan for their future, and the only way to do that is to help them find that career interest as early as humanly possible. I will say that I always appreciate how the board supports career and technical education. You show up at all the events that we have, and I can't thank you enough. So, I did want to say as a closing, but I appreciate all the support that you provide and all of cabinet-level, all of our senior leadership, that they provide career and technical education, because I firmly believe it is the heart of what education is as a whole. Thank you very much.
Rusty, just real quick, board members, any comments or questions? Okay, go ahead. Do you want to go down the line? Yeah, I'll start with Mr. Walter. Ms. Sanders, you didn't key up, I was making sure. You go ahead.
So, I always probably have the same question. First of all, thank you. I truly appreciate this program. To me, it's a segue to, "If I'm not able to go to college, I have another opportunity." And, you know, a lot of times, to some kids, that's like, that's the extraordinary part of being in school, because I have something else to do. I don't have to go to college and try to keep up with school as a whole. So, I understand that. My question goes back to, and I'm sorry if I've asked this already. So, I'm in the community, and folks will ask me, "How do I get my business involved in the CTE program?" I've gotten that on two occasions. One, I sent an email to Dr. Kapicki, and I'm guessing that got to you some way, somehow. But for folks who may be listening in and want to understand how that transpires, can you explain that?
Yeah, right now, the best way to do that is to email me or call me directly. We have work-based learning coordinators at a couple of our schools, not all of them. And then we have a CTE coordinator that kind of works with all students, not just the ones that are looking for an internship. So, we, they are also the ones that are boots-on-the-ground at the school. So, when something comes through me, like I did get your email the other day. And so, when I got that, I forwarded it actually to our coordinator at Mount Pleasant High School, and she's already contacted the gentleman. So, that's kind of the process, and all of our contact information's on our website so people can find me really quickly on the CTE website, and that's probably the best place to start.
Okay, and then just one more. Just, I want you to use this as an infomercial if you can. How, what does that look like? So, like, I was amazed to hear, like, this gentleman had gone through one of our programs in our schools, and then he opened, like, or started a business or whatever have you, and was looking forward to bring our students in as interns and then potentially hire them. Like, that all coming into fruition for me was amazing. So, how does, is that how that looks, or how that happens?
Yeah, and there's a couple steps in the process. One of the things that we've started doing recently is working with Apprenticeship NC through the Community College Office. They have a regional representative that supports the western part of North Carolina. And so, we met with her recently about how do we partner with her? Because I don't have a person in my office that directly works with apprenticeships. So, we've had to use Apprenticeship NC and sometimes NC Works and those types of organizations to kind of make that happen. But we had a very successful meeting with the lady from Apprenticeship NC, and she referred, she told us she would meet anytime with a business. So, we met recently with a company called Morgan Chair there in Stanley County, I believe. And they are wanting to partner with us. So, she was, that was the first time we've had all of the right people at the table to make that happen. And so, that's kind of our new process, is that we work with her, and she's the connection to the business community. She said she will set up the apprenticeship, she will take care of it all. And so, that's exactly what I needed, is I needed that go-between. And now that we have that, it's been very successful so far.
Okay, so, last question, I promise. So, do you have what you need to continue to make this successful for both the district and our students, and then ultimately our community so that they can reinvest back into our community?
Do I have the necessary resources? I'm right now trying to realign some of our central office responsibilities. We were hoping for our months of employment to come in, and Carol's sitting here. I'm so grateful that we got that today, so I can actually make a few changes. So, but that was one of the things that I'm trying to do, is rearrange our office so that we have people accountable. In the past, the coordinators that I have in my department, they've been, they've had multiple duties, and we have not had a clean structure that you are responsible for work-based learning. So, that's what I'm trying to do right now, is realign some of our positions. And if I can get that done, then that will be a big check toward getting it accomplished, what you and I are talking about.
So, Mrs. Sanders, I can assure you that Mr. Parker will have all the support he needs to continue to develop our CTE program. He does a great job. We want to make sure that we grow this program as well.
You heard that, right?
I heard that, thank you. Just being recorded, I heard that.
And you have the board supporting you, too. Thank you, Rusty, for the presentation, the high-level overview. If we're trying to be a top-10 school, or top school system in the nation, CTE is a big part of that, and 45 pathways for our students. I'm all about getting students engaged in their own learning and giving them a passion to come to school and to be successful going forward. And I think that finding the why, that's the key, and I think maybe part of our- And I think that finding the why, that's the key, and I think maybe part of our strategic plans should really have, not just CTE-finding your why, but if it's arts or whatever it is. But that's, that's a great, great thing we all should strive for, is helping our kids find their why. And again, just the community partnerships is a, is a big key. I mean, we're, there's a lot of employers out there, and they'd like to hire a local if they could, so getting our kids introduced to what, what businesses are in our community and seeing those opportunities, I think is a great thing, so thank you again.
Thank you.
So in terms of pushing the finding our why, that is one of our themes, and that really has been planted, those seeds have been planted, and that that flower is growing at the leadership of Dr. Withers. That's her passion, and she deserves all the credit for that. And she continues to lead by telling people to pursue that why, so she deserves a lot of credit for that. We definitely are going to continue that theme.
Mr. Park?
Thank you for your presentation, and, you know, I'm proud of a lot of things that we've accomplished over the last 12 years or so since I've been here, and probably CTE is at the top of the list, and I appreciate how far we've come and all the hard work. And just continue going forward, so thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
So Rusty, I will sing your praises until, I don't know, I just, you have transformed this school system with the CTE program that we have. I'm so forever grateful to you because you've given my junior a reason to go to school and to be excited about what the future holds for him. So I would challenge, and I've said this before, I would challenge any county against ours with our CTE program.
Thank you.
You are wonderful, the, the schools are wonderful. We've had the best night tonight. I am so proud to be on the school board. It is just incredible what we're doing, so thank you very much for everything that you are doing.
Appreciate you saying that, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Ditto. But, and, and as you said, the, you know, you used to be location, 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 and we're doing wow, wow, wow. And a perfect example, I was listening to the radio just this week, and they were talking about the shortages of pilots, and what do we have now? The aviation academy that we're going to train ours, and so we're going to have them ready. And then I'm getting on you, we got the electrical part, and I'm saying, what, plumber? Plumber? And so we're jumping on these things, and then we got the junior achievement, we bought them aboard, and we're, we jump on these things, and I am just, as Tim mentioned, again, another one of my board members, we, we, we jump on these things, and I am just excited, just, we, we look at something and we go at, and Rusty, y'all do just a great job.
Thank you very much.
And we, we try to find something, and, and you tell us what you need, and we're going to go after it, because it's, it's the future of these children. And the apprentice, apprentice program, whatever you need, if, we've got, we've got all these businesses coming in, and these businesses are going to need these employees.
That's true.
And we need to get them trained. And so whatever you need, come, come to us. Let us know, we're going to work for it. Thanks a lot. Great, great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Adcock?
Thank you so much. I appreciate all of the hard work that your team does. I think it's really important for you to tell us, how many students are in the CTE program now?
Right now, there's an unduplicated number, because several students take more than two, three, or four CTE classes in a year, but the unduplicated number is around 13,000 students.
13,000.
If you, if you take the duplicated account, and they'll take multiples, probably close to 22,000.
22,000, that's awesome, thank you.
It's a huge number, so.
That is one-third of our students, almost.
Oh, yeah.
That is great, that is fantastic.
It's a huge number.
That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
The only thing I was going to ask you is, we've had a couple requests to make that a little more accessible on that front page, maybe you can work with Ms. Boone with the CTE that they had to really kind of look for, the pathways, and we need to make that easy, especially for parents.
I would love to have it on the front page.
Yes. So we would love for you.
I would love it on the front page, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. We, we think that's really important, so thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
That was really good.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we will move to 9.01, the consent agenda. May I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will move to the action agenda. We have pulled 10.01, 10.02, and 10.03, which are the policies 2410, 2420, and 2450. And Dr. Kapiki, would you like to speak to that? Or we're just going to say that you're going to address those and bring us back to, back to the board?
Yes, I just think some of those policies need to be reviewed and looked over to make sure that we get it right, so just, I'm asking the board for some patience on those three policies. Based on some conversations I've had with other board members, I think it's proven that we take a look at it, so I'm asking them to stay table for now.
Great. Okay, we will move to 10.04, which in the amendment of the approval of the agenda is now going to be named the Cabarrus County Schools Legislative Agenda 2022, and I will turn that over to Dr. Kapiki.
Yes, can we pull that presentation up? Thank you. So if I may, I would ask Dr. Withers, Dr. Bish, Amy Lauter, Amy Jewell to come, come to the podium. So as we've developed this legislative agenda with our Board of Education and their input and any input you have this evening, I also gather some of our teammates, our team together this evening to speak to each of these, these policies, give them a, it, it directly hits, hits them and their departments, so I want them to speak to it and give the board some, some rationale as to why we're supporting some of this legislative agenda. Next slide, please. So as we look ahead to the short session of the General Assembly, education advocates from across the state are working together to see meaningful impactful legislation passed, and these following items are proposed Cabarrus County Schools Legislative Agenda items to the board. Next slide, please. So the, the first one is, is the remote learning days, the severe weather and/or other emergency situations. Dr. Withers?
Sure, so you can see on here, it's a request to make permanent the provision that was in general statute that allows public schools to move to in-person, from in-person to remote learning based on extreme weather conditions or other emergency situations. And that statute was written but was temporary, so it's a, a request to make that a permanent ability for you to make that decision for Cabarrus County Schools based on circumstances specific to our school system.
Next slide. Amy Jewell and Amy Lauter, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having us up here, especially to speak to school safety and mental health. So I have the privilege of supervising our school social workers across the district, and I think you've heard me talk about them quite a bit. We have 30 school social workers, which is amazing. We have grown leaps and bounds. Just sort of a little bit of a snapshot here, the recommended ratio is one school social worker to every 250 students, or one social worker to every 50 students if you're a high need school. Given our enrollment today, our ratio is one social worker to every 1,126 students. And we're still doing much better than we were before, but we need more, you know? School social workers are trained mental health professionals, they are experts in encountering crisis, anything that walks in, right? So we are trained to assess the needs of students and families, identify barriers, provide interventions, like all levels of them, and it's hard to do that, right, when we don't have enough people. And we work really closely with our psychologists and our school counselors, but we need, again, more. So we are really encouraging more funding, more positions. There's also a little bit of an issue, obviously, with pay, and I know we've talked about that before as well, but school social workers right now are the only school mental health professionals that are not paid for their advanced degree if they've completed their graduate coursework after August of 2013. And this year, when the state released the budget, they were the only school mental health professionals that did not get an ongoing stipend included in part of their salary. And so to be able to recruit our highly-trained mental health professionals, support them so that they can support our students and families to the best of their ability, we're hoping that the state invests in our social workers so that we can invest back into our students.
So every school in Cabarrus County Schools has what we call a CISP team. CISP is specialized instructional support personnel. Those are our school counselors, social workers, psychologists, nurses. We also connect with our school resource officers. So every school has that discipline, that, that team of five different disciplines. What we find, I supervise the school psychologist, and I'm also the direct liaison to the school resource officers, so I'll speak directly to those two groups tonight. The school psychologist, they engage in comprehensive services in Cabarrus County Schools, so they don't just test, which is what traditionally psychologists are known for. We also do counseling, consultation, and collaborative problem-solving. We engage with students, families, educators, and communities. We also are looking at terrible ratios, so their national recommended ratio is 1 to 500 school psychologists, one, one psychologist to 500 students. What we find in Cabarrus County Schools as of today is 1 to roughly 1,600. So the numbers are few of far between for the supports that are needed for the school psychological services. Additionally, we're experiencing a national shortage of school psychologists, and so that also adds to the, the increased need. And then monetary incentives always are helpful, but we don't always have that from the states. The state has definitely been putting a focus on school psychology, so that's been very helpful. And we've also received support from the county and also in our local budget committee. We have a lot of support for that, it's just we always seem to run out of money for all the needs that we've got. So, school psychs are very involved in student safety and well-being, as are our SROs, our school resource officers. We use a crisis curriculum called Prepare. Prepare is known around the world, it's a evidence-based practice, and the National Association of School Psychologists actually developed the curriculum. So psychologists are heavily involved in that, but again, we don't have enough of them to be able to support all the additional needs. That discipline, the five-discipline team at each school, though, we train everyone there, and they are involved with helping to support this work. So in looking at school resource officers, we are very fortunate in Cabarrus County Schools to have school resource officers at each school. However, they're also in a shortage, and so sometimes we have to share amongst schools different campuses. And what we're asking is, we write grants each year to support the funding of the positions of school resource officers, as well as safety equipment and safety trainings, and we would like to be able to have recurring funding for that, not just written-in grants, but we find that that's critical for all five of those disciplines to help support the physical and the psychological safety needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jewell and Mrs. Lauter. Next slide, please. Dr. Bish?
So when we talk about recruitment and retention, we talk a lot about the pay increases, and it mentions here particularly our teachers and support personnel, and in some districts, there are assistant principals on the A teacher salary schedule. The A schedule is a bachelor's degree as opposed to a G schedule, which would be an advanced or a master's degree. And so we, we look at the pay of those people who have a bachelor's degree, and what is their pay, and, and looking at, can we increase that pay to make teaching and working in the education environment more enticing, particularly if someone's trying to raise a family with that? And additionally, we talk about restoring the master's pay. So as Amy Jewell pointed out, if we hire a social worker who did not start their degree until after the date in 2013, they are paid on a bachelor's level even if they hold a master's degree, which is the degree we want them to hold. I want to go back to Ashton's presentation where she talked about Dr. Horn at Northwest High School coming in to teach. Dr. Horn is paid on a bachelor's level. He doesn't get master's pay, and he doesn't get doctoral pay. So here is someone that is hugely educated and such a valuable resource to that school and to our students, and who has done this as a second career, but we pay him on a bachelor's level. And that's what we're looking at here, is restoring that master's pay, to say, as educators, we should be promoting education, we should be modeling that for our students, and yet we're not, we're not doing that. And then professional development opportunities and creating pipelines for growth of our teachers, as well as attracting teachers. We look at the Teaching Fellows Program, which was eliminated, then brought back, but I don't know if you know, it's only at very limited campuses and in very limited numbers. The Principal Fellows Program is much larger than our Teaching Fellows, so we really need to kind of get that back where it used to be, where the Teaching Fellows Program was robust. We are looking at advanced teaching roles, so a teacher who wants to become a leader doesn't necessarily have to be an assistant principal, principal central office in order to move through and grow in their profession. So these are the things that I would say, if I had to pick one of them, it's restoring master's pay. There is nothing that would change the face of morale and recruitment in North Carolina faster than restoring master's pay for those who currently hold it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bish. Next slide, please.
Dr. Bish stole my seat. So this one is about increasing pre-K funding, and I think I've heard you speak about this before. I'm an investment in children as young as we can possibly get it, reaps huge benefits, I'm sure. Sarah Reeves could speak to that as well, and this is just a commitment to additional investments, putting into quality pre-K programs so that all students have access and all of our children in the community have access.
This is important, too, when you think, you've heard a lot about letters training and the, the science of reading that the state has invested in, and our teachers are undergoing right now with that training, taking part in it, finishing up their first year this summer, and will continue it to next, next summer, so it just makes perfect sense to continue to promote the pre-K funding. Next slide, please.
I can speak to that one as well?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. Do you want to?
We can both, go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay, so teacher assistants, again, you can see the current funding ratio there of what the state funds us at for TAs, as well as the proposed funding. And TAs, or we call them IAs, instructional assistants, are such an important part of our classrooms and our supports for students, and able to do that small group instruction, again, that Sarah Reeves describes, and you've heard so many of our teachers discuss, they are integral to being able to do that in that small group format.
So logic just tells you that if we had more hands in the room and more, more bodies in the room to help our teachers to reduce some of the, the workload and to, to spread out some of the work, if we had more bodies in there, we're funded with more teacher assistants, we'd be able to put more, more adults in the classroom, so that's why we support this. Next slide, please. Calendar flexibility, we've talked about this many times, I think we're all aware of what this is. We would like to be able to determine our own start and stop dates, so we're definitely, we are definitely asking the state to support calendar flexibility, like Cabarrus County Schools decide our start and stop date. Next slide. Dr. Bish?
So as of January 1st, 2021, or there it shows December 31st, 2020, if a teacher was hired on January 1st, and they work their career in North Carolina, and they retire, they have no medical benefits as part of their pension. I started back in 1989, and when I retired, I had full medical benefits, and I only had to buy, I didn't even have to buy supplemental, because that is my supplemental. So Medicare is what I had, and then my state became my supplemental. That's a huge gift that we rely on as, as public servants. That has been taken away. I used to say to young people that public service, and teaching is a public service, is not something where you get rich during the course of your career, but the benefits are wonderful on the back end. The thank you from public service comes on the back end in terms of defined pension and health benefits. Those health benefits are gone. So any of our new teachers who began after January 1 of 2021 do not have health benefits at the point of their retirement. So we are asking that those be reinstated. I think that is a piece of, of teacher recruitment, I think it's a piece of teacher retention to be able to say, this is a benefit that you're working toward, and while you think that's 30 years away, it will go in a blink of an eye, I'm living proof of that. And so we are asking that they put that back, instead of saying that there will be no health benefits for retirees.
Next slide. Next slide.
Okay, so adjusting school performance grades. Anyone that knows me well knows that I can stand up here and talk about that for hours, but I will spare you. Adjusting the current school performance grading metrics so that there will be either a two-grade system, one for proficiency and one for growth, or a change in calculation to 51% proficiency and 49% growth. It is currently 80/20, and for those of you that understand all of that, you know what that means. But basically proficiency is a destination for students. It's a benchmark that the state sets of, we call it at grade level. And then growth is the amazing impact of the teachers that we have in the classroom. And are they moving every student, regardless of their starting point, whether the student's below grade level, at grade level, when they meet them, or above grade level? Growth measures how far that teacher takes that student in the course of a year, which again is the most impactful work that our teachers do, is making sure that we are growing every student regardless of how they come to us.
So the retirement wait law says that when a person retires from North Carolina's system, they must wait, they must sit out six months. They cannot work for another government agency, public school system, or any other government agency for six months. That means that when our teachers retire, or anyone else, they can turn around and go work at a charter school or any other private school the next day. We can't have them help us for six months. No interims, no subbing, nothing. When their six months are up, they are limited to working less than 30 hours per week, because if they work more than 30 and they're in that group that has health benefits, they lose their health benefits. That's a huge issue. For instance, I have four retired assistant principals. When assistant principals go out on maternity leave, or we have a vacancy, and in that interim, I call these four people to come and help out, because you can't just leave a school, let's say there's only the principal and one assistant principal. They can only work three days a week. So that means I either have to use two of them, or I have to leave that school without that additional help two days a week, which is generally what happens, because I've got all four of them working at any given time. So this is a request that they revisit that law. It didn't use to be this way, so that we can re-employ retired teachers without that six-month wait time, and without them losing their pension and their retirement benefits.
And the last one is in regards to pandemic learning loss. We all know the impact that we've had to endure with COVID-19 and the percentages of students that have suffered learning loss. So knowing this and being aware of the fact that we are still working with our children in terms of some of the deficits that they faced for being out of school for a year, we are asking the state to support us and extend current upcoming school years to help us address some of those educational gaps and provide our students with the opportunity to get back on track. So some of those considerations would also be given to funding additional supports, intensive tutoring, and any targeted summer programs. So we're going to continue to advocate for the state to try and, for the state to support us in providing more opportunities for kids so that we can address some of those learning loss things that they went through. And I believe that is it.
Okay, we will begin the discussion, and I will start with Ms. Adcock. Any comments or questions regarding the approval of this legislative agenda?
I don't really have any questions. I think all of the needs and everything that's been brought to our attention is very valuable information, and these are needs that we need to be addressed. So I appreciate the time and effort it took to get this together, and I believe it will help us definitely.
Ms. Carpenter, comments or questions?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, love all those. Still interested in the sales tax thing. I want that money. That is something we have talked about for years and years, and it is something that would bring extra money back into our coffers, which we could use that extra money.
Let me interrupt you just for one moment. The North Carolina School Board Association has not taken a position on that, is the word that we've gotten. So we need to vet that a little bit more before we go one way or the other.
And this has not been mentioned here, but it was in your report talking, and you might can just answer this. It was talking about the money for computers and internet and all this. There was a third round of that. Are we going to do anything on that? I know that's kind of outside, but it was on your report that you sent out.
Yeah, so we are looking into that, but I wouldn't be able to say yes or no to that right now.
Okay, well, that's, but all this does look good. Okay. I'll just say fine.
You're good, okay. Ms. Blackwell?
I just had a question. I wasn't sure if you could answer, Dr. Bisch. What was the purpose for them making teachers wait six months? I mean, was there, there was some reasoning behind that initially when they did that?
Initially, back years ago, when I was a lot younger, the idea was that if you waited six months, you wouldn't be, in their minds, double-dipping. That you would, you couldn't retire and immediately come back. It was, the goal was to stop people from leaving, getting your pension, and then just turning around and coming back to work. The idea was to stop you from retiring early and then thinking that you could just turn around and keep earning the same amount of money. So that was the original intent, is my understanding from back then. I think there is some thought, too, that you need six months to just get your body rested, but the reality is, we could use so many of our retirees for interims, short periods. We're not talking about hiring them back as a full-time teacher and putting them back in the classroom full-time. But for instance, if I have a retired teacher that I now have a maternity leave, I can't use that retired teacher for a six- or eight-week maternity leave, because it's more than 30 hours a week, and it will take their benefits from them. They can only work three days a week. So that's the conundrum, and all of our retirees have an earnings cap that they have to stay under over the course of a calendar year, not a fiscal year, a calendar year. So if they are subbing for us, they have to watch that. It's their responsibility to know when they're close to their cap and make sure they don't go over it to lose their benefits. If we had the flexibility to allow them to use more than 30 hours, but still keep their cap even, so we could use them for an interim, or I could use someone like a retired assistant principal or principal, they could cover an interim maternity leave for a principal or assistant principal, and be there five days a week, while at the same time throughout the course of a year, they manage how much they work and stay under their cap. That flexibility is not given to us, and that's kind of where we're trying to go with this. Does that make sense?
That makes a lot of sense, so I appreciate your explanation for that. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
I hate to, since she was up, and it did bring up one question. You know, on the insurance, does, you know, when they start, were paying the insurance, was the state paying every bit of that insurance amount? Or did the school system have to pay part, and the state pay part of it? Or do you know?
For retirees?
Yeah, for retirees.
The state provides that for retirees. For employees, then, yes, we pay part of that, and then depending on the dependents and all. But for retirees, that, it is a, it's kind of like you buy a supplemental, like when my husband retires, he has Medicaid or Medicare, but we have to buy his supplemental for the gap. In education, one of our benefits was that when we retired, Medicare is our primary, and we pay for the Medicare premiums out of my social security check. They take money for that. But my pension, one of my pension benefits was that my gap, my supplemental, was given to me by the state as part of my retirement benefits. That's not open to anyone hired after January 1 of 21.
But the state paid that. In other words, I mean, sometimes I know some of the state benefits, they pay part of it, but then they come back to the county and say, okay, you're going to pay X amount of dollars of that benefit. But they paid that whole amount, you're telling me, that amount they paid.
Yes, they provide that insurance. I would say that it was paid from all of the years that were paid in for 30 years, but yes, that was, that does not touch us locally.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you very much.
Mr. Barr?
No questions. I'm sure this will be consent whenever.
This is an action item. Mr. Walter?
First of all, thank you for putting something together. I do think it's critical that we all speak with one voice and have one priority list that we can go on when we talk to our legislature. So thank you for putting that together. I would suggest that you have a one-page summary, and then maybe a page for each one of these items when we present that to our legislators. And then secondly, the last time we did this was, I guess, 2017. There were eight items on it. Four of these items you've already mentioned that are coming forward, and then the one item that Ms. Carpenter brought up was still on that one from last time. Did you review the old one that we had?
Yeah. Yeah, so the last time you looked at, you broke it down to the local and state tax. The local tax force, the local tax 225, state was 475. The request was made for us to ask for reimbursement of the state portion, which at that time in 2016 was roughly $760,000, $762,000. So we were asking for either a refund of that or an exemption from that. So that's something we are going to look into, and that's what Mrs. Carpenter is referencing, but I wanted to put this in front of the board this evening, but we will definitely look at that sales tax to add to the agenda as well.
Okay, but do we need that before the short session, or is that something that can wait till later?
It can wait. But we will look into it. I don't have the actual numbers on the most recent update on the financial end of it, so I'll do some homework on that.
I understand.
But it's a good point.
But thank you for putting something together, so we can all be on the same page.
Thank you.
Several thoughts, but I'll keep them brief. It's pretty late, but I like that we've identified the problems based off of what's happened over the course of the last two years, and then identified ways that we can, you know, suggest solutions, as opposed to just saying, hey, we got a problem and doing nothing about it. It looks like we are trying to do something about it. What I want to clarify, because I think we get in this mindset that everybody understands what this means, and lots of people don't understand what a legislative agenda is. Why are we doing it? What happens as a result of us doing it? And then if we don't get answers to these things, then what? So if somebody could break that down for the viewing audience and for the folks that don't understand that?
I was going to do that on my remarks. But did you have anything as far as?
Oh, no. No, 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 no. I do have comments about them, but I summed it up by saying we've identified problems and also solutions to fix those problems, so I appreciate that. And also, just want to thank Amy Jewell, Amy Louder, I can't remember which one I spoke to this week, last week, about, you know, students that are having mental health issues in our schools and just linking them to resources out in our communities. It is imperative that we identify that our students are suffering even post-pandemic, and being able to link them to what's in our community is very important. I also want to send a kudos to the social workers who are picking up the slack when it comes to those children who are experiencing those mental health issues, because they are real and they are happening. So thank you.
Thank you. So with that being said, if everyone is in agreement, what we will do is, and for our viewing audience and those that really do not understand what a legislative agenda is, it is the list of priorities that Cabarrus County Schools, the staff, and the Board of Education support to take to the state to say, these are the items that we would like for you to consider when you're reviewing general statutes or laws, which is how we have to operate, and that's what drives our policies. So every couple of years, we meet with the legislators to determine an overview, which was really hard in the last couple of years because of what was going on with COVID. But we do an overview of what's going on with our system. Our surrounding counties have just done the same thing. There are some priorities that I actually sent to you guys, showing that there are some differences between the counties, but this is what our staff and our Board of Education is going to stand behind to say that this is our list of priorities that will help us in when you are looking at general statutes and making new laws that address funding, support, you know, all the various ideas I'm sure everyone's gotten of what these laws look like. If you have questions, more than likely, we will have a, very soon, and I need for you guys to get me some calendar dates, once we've approved this, the next move is to have a meeting with our local representatives. So we will do that. So with any type of questions or comments that you have after the fact, we will do this again, probably in June, but for the short session, we just need the approval for right now to move forward, you know, to state what we think is a priority for today. We can revisit it, we can, and when Ms. Carpenter, when we get that information back about the sales tax, and then I know that there was another one on there, local aid, I can't remember exactly which one it was, Mr. Walter, but with those, we don't know where they stand right now. So when we get that information back, if y'all decide that you'd like to amend it after we've met with them, we can do that at any given time. These are a fluid document that can be changed at any given time with our priorities, if y'all so choose after we receive additional information. But for now, we need to put this forth and get our first meeting scheduled.
So you need a motion?
I do.
Happy to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Legislative agenda for 2022.
Perfect. Motion by Mr. Walter, second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next, we will move to 10.05, which are the COVID safety guidelines. May I have a motion that the board remain in mask optional?
Some of it.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sandage and a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. That motion passes unanimously as well. 11.01, we do not have any guest speakers listed. So with that, it will end our business meeting for the night, and I will ask that, I have a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A6.
Some of it.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sandage and a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. And with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience. And thank you for joining us.